So while we're making our last checks that we have, everybody, we welcome everybody that's joining us. We welcome the audience as well. And this will be our first adventure, so bear with us.
There's Liz.
I'm here.
Yes. Alright, so I think we have everybody. So, alright, we will officially call to order this meeting at 7:06 PM. This is the regularly scheduled village council meeting, April 27, 2020, and this is a virtual meeting due to the executive order. We'll have our pledge of allegiance and Mark Batsu, can you please lead us? Liz, can we please have a roll call vote?
Um, yes.
We'll have a roll call.
Uh, Bryce?
Here.
Batsu?
Here.
Batsu?
Here.
Did I, did I get it here?
Yeah, he is here.
Okay. Eschman?
Present.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Anne Skornika?
Here.
Okay. I've got, uh, seven.
Wonderful. Good to see everybody. Uh, next is the approval of our current agenda.
I'd like to-
So, Tanya?
Yes.
This, this is Dan.
Yes.
I don't see any spot for committee updates, and I'd like to add under, for item number eight, committee updates.
Um-
They were left, they were left off the agenda.
Committee updates were, but, um, Dan, this is Liz, committee updates were, but items from trustees were left on the agenda. Is that good enough for you, or do you want to add committee updates?
I would, unless we're changing the agenda format, we've always had committee updates following, I believe, our consent agenda. Is that not true?
You are correct, but this is a special time, so we've actually amended the agenda.
When you are-
I'm, I'm requesting that the committee updates be added to the agenda under item number eight, please.
Okay. And you are also more than welcome to use them under the items from the trustee. Just keep in mind that these meetings are for essential items, and so we were limiting and trying to put it all in one condensed area, um, so we could just use it. So it's up to you whether you choose to have it which place.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I'd like to add item number eight, committee updates. That would make new business number nine. And then I also like to add a, a, a nine C, which would be Rules of Procedure slash Personnel Committee under nine C.
Nine C?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be nine D, because we already have A, B, C?
Right, nine C is-
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not finished yet. So what was nine C should have been old business, and I'm making that old business number 10. It should be A, under old business, way findings.
Unfinished, not old, unfinished.
We can call it unfinished, that's fine.
This extension is new business. The extension is new business, it is not a continuation, because that was a six month. So it should probably stay on new business.
Well, way findings has been on our agenda now for how long now, and it's just been a continuation. So to me, that seems like it would be old business.
Um, that is correct, Dan, but it's not critical, so, um, I will defer to Dale on that one.
As I mentioned to you before, I cannot hear anybody anymore, for some reason.
Dale?
So, so what are you, what are you proposing? That we just leave it under new business and call it, um, after, uh, call it item number, actually, leave it, leave it C and adding, leaving C alone, and then adding Rules of Procedure slash Personnel Committee as D then? Is that what you're recommending?
Um, hold, hold on one second. I'm gonna take my computer into Dale, okay?
Sorry, he can't hear anyone.
You know what happened, all of a sudden he just stopped?
No, that, that's okay. So, um, trustee Eschman has an issue with, um, way finding, and- Trustee Eschman?
Yes?
It was way finding, and what else?
I wanted, I, I thought that way finding, because it's been on our agenda now several times, that's being old business, item 10, um, uh, letter A?
Yeah.
Under unfinished business. I think somebody corrected me and said unfinished business.
That was me.
Alright, so that would be item, I don't, I'm saying that it should be item 10, uh, letter A, and then also under unfinished business, I'd like to see a, a master plan under unfinished business, item B.
Okay, so unfinished A, way finding, and unfinished B, um-
Master plan.
Master plan.
Correct?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And keep in mind, virtual meetings are for essential items only, not things that can wait until a standard meeting.
Yeah, do you consider these to be essential items, Dan? That we, that we cannot wait on these? We must take care of them this month?
Yes.
Where is it posted anywhere that this is essential items only? It's the governor's or executive order. I hear- It's on the Michigan State website. You can look under, um, michigan.gov/whitmer, and you can find all of her executive orders and executive orders. She said anything was handled any different other than the social distancing and that. I didn't say anything about essential business only. Uh, that was a different executive order. I can't remember which one it was, number 12 or something?
15.
15, okay.
But that's been rescinded as a result of this one.
It's been in multiple orders, and I've sent the links for the MML webinars defining the legal issues of meeting with, um, a virtual meeting, and so those are the items that are listed in there. Essential items. Our public is not available, they're not with us. We need to make sure that they're involved, and only hit items that are essential at this moment. They're supposed to-
Mostly things like, we have to pay our bills, and we have to move forward with any contractual agreements and things like that.
I'm, I'm, I'm listing these as essential, please. I'd like to add them as essential to the agenda. Thank you.
Is that the consensus of council?
So, I apologize, I was back and forth. What are we listing as essential?
The items that I requested to be added.
Okay, um, A and B on unfinished, is that correct?
I, item, again, adding number eight, committee updates, and then going to number nine, item number D, Rules of Procedure slash Committee, and under unfinished business, item number 10, number, the letter A, would be way finding, and then under unfinished business, item 10, letter B, master plan.
Okay, and I apologize, I'm trying to keep up, um, okay, I think I've got it.
I would like to-
I've lost the audio again.
I would like to amend the agenda to add under four, um, the approval of the February meeting minutes.
Is that essential?
To approve, yes. We, we must approve meeting minutes at the next, at the next scheduled council meetings, and we didn't have March, so therefore, we need to approve them in, in, in this meeting. Yes, that's essential.
And if it's not the case with a virtual meeting according to the executive order, they would wait until a regular scheduled meeting is perfectly fine according to the order. We have two sets of minutes to approve, not just the one.
Meeting minutes, um, I would like to add the approval of the February minutes to the agenda.
We do not have them to review? We haven't received them?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We received a draft, we have not received the final copy?
Yes, because we don't read the final copy until we approve them.
Well, we're off to a really lousy start. Well, considering the fact that we didn't even get the minutes until-
Yes.
Only a half hour prior to the meeting, it does not give us a whole lot of time to review them. I would prefer not to approve them this meeting.
No, excuse me, we got the minutes for our, for our March meeting. March meeting was canceled, so therefore, this, this now meeting for April, you would have already received these draft minutes. This isn't anything new. And then, to actually get them, yes, they were forgotten in the packet, but you did receive them in your March packet. And these go back to February, and now we're in April, and we haven't approved these minutes yet.
And if this would have been addressed on Friday when we received the agendas, we would have had all this information in front of us to work through, not surprise items that we don't know what we're doing, we don't have in front of us.
It's not surprise. I contacted the office earlier today.
So that would become item five, because that would be the minutes, and the agenda is four?
Yes.
Okay, because you said four, I'm just double checking.
It's under four, it, it, the February, approval of minutes comes after the agenda.
The agenda is four, so that would be five, correct?
Yes.
Which would make dispersment six, public comments seven, consent agenda eight, and down the line. What we're currently looking for is an approval of the amended agenda at this point?
Liz, are you all set with the amendments?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Support was Skornika?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion on the table for the amended agenda, and that would be motion by Councilwoman Eschman, supported by Councilwoman Skornika. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I believe we're supposed to do a roll call for virtual meetings per the executive order.
That's right.
Oh, yep, that is true.
Good catch.
Did we not do that?
No, I just, I, I did that, I forgot, nope. Okay, so, shall we have Liz do a roll call, please, for item number four?
I thought we did. I, I checked, marked it off. Bryce?
Yep, we did a roll call.
Batsu?
No, okay.
This is, this is a roll call vote for the-
Right.
-approval of the modified agenda.
Correct.
Item number four.
Do a roll call for that?
Yes, according to the executive order, as Colleen correctly pointed out, we need to do roll call votes for all-
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay, that was my, my bad. I forgot.
Bryce?
Yeah.
No?
Batsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
Well.
That was a no?
Correct, no.
Okay, Hayden?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got four to three.
Thank you. Motion carries, four to three. Next up is item number five, which is the approval of the minutes. And Liz, can you tell me the date on that, February?
24th, I believe.
24th, yes, okay, that's Monday. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So we're looking for a motion on that?
So, so Liz, I have a correction on mine where you have trustee Eschman, and I did send this out to you, and I'm not sure if it got to you or not, but, uh, back on the second, I believe, of March is when I sent it to you, but, um, you, you combined the approval of the Drain Commission with MDNR with Fragmities, and what it should have been combined with was the Crossman Park Drain. So, we were talking, we were all talking about protecting the creek, and that I commented that, um, I would, I would like to see approval from Oakland County Drain Commissioner and the MDNR to approve the planned drawings of the Crossman Park Drain that's discharging into the creek. That's what I stated.
Okay.
Do you have that writing, trustee Eschman? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get everything together, and-
That's okay.
So we do not have a motion on the table yet, prior to our discussion, please? Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Support.
Was that Mark Robinson?
Pat George.
Oh, Pat, okay, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see.
Now we can have discussion and make an amendment.
So, did you get what I-
Dan's.
So, Liz, did you get that, what I had stated there, Liz?
Um, actually, no, I did not. That's why I was asking if you could give it to me in writing, but go ahead and give it to me now, I'm, I'm good.
Right. So, what, what should have, if you look at what's written down there and strike prior to any Fragmity treatment within the village, it should say, in replace of that, it should say, prior to, or, it should say, of the planned drawing of the Crossman Park Drain, discharging into the creek. So it was all about protecting the creek.
Okay, so, um, of planned drawing, right, for the creek?
Yes, of the Crossman Park Drain. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything further for the, the minutes from February 24?
Um, page four, Liz, I, I gave this, um, correction under Athlet and Copper Rules, where it had the no action taken, um, to indicate that council agreed not to be included in the class action, in the class action lawsuit.
Okay. I, um, talked about that with the village manager, and I, I think we agreed my minutes were correct. If, if you want me to change them, I will.
Yeah, because, oh, I, I talked to the village manager bottom as well, and he agreed to put, to, of what I suggested, so, um, I would like it to say, because it, I guess, in my perception, it, it implies that we didn't do anything, and what we did do was we agreed not to be included in the class action lawsuit.
Okay, that was not my understanding, but I will change it.
Thank you.
Is that something that we should be reviewing the video of, to clarify?
There, we, council said we weren't going to be part of the class action lawsuit, but feel free to review it, but that's what council agreed to, based on the recommendation of our village manager.
I think Colleen's comment just adds a little more information to what we did, which is basically, we took no action because we did not intend to join it.
Correct.
So my understanding was no action was taken?
Correct.
That's correct. And Colleen's just trying, I, I think Colleen's point is to say, no action was taken because we do not, because council does not intend to join the lawsuit.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, and then, and then D, um, I believe the corrected copy said suggestions, but we just need to insert of, such, I'm sorry, for, suggestions for best practices.
Okay. And you said that was D?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the minutes?
No, other than that, my other corrections were already noted in there, so.
Were they noted and corrected, Colleen?
They, they were, that you changed, yeah, they were changed, and that last, the version you gave us, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yep, it's just these, when I did a comparison, yeah, those were, the other, those were the ones that were omitted. So you, they should be good now.
Okay.
So in that case, I will amend my motion to say, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes as amended during discussion.
And Pat, do you support that?
Support.
All right. Any further discussion on those questions? Liz, if you please, we're ready for a vote.
Okay, um, so are we doing a roll call on everything?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Batsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
And Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries, seven zero. And item number six will be our dispersments. First up is the March 15, 2020 dispersments, which is item A. And I would like to entertain a motion for those, please.
I just have a quick question. I was gonna bring it up before. Was the, did the agenda get posted on the website? I noticed earlier it wasn't up there, so was the agenda posted for any public?
The agenda was, yes. However, um, the normal dispersments was not posted with it.
Okay, alright, just wanted, um, to make sure that the agenda was available, okay.
Yes.
Alright, so do we have a, um, motion on the table, or do we have a motion, please, for the March 15?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, for, uh, number five A, to approve the dispersment for ending March 15, 2020, and re, uh, retroactively authorize the payment of village bills in the amount of $23,023.
And do we have support?
Support.
I'm, I'm sorry, that, that motion broke up. I'm sorry, what was the number?
Dale, did you say something?
This is Dan, I'm sorry, the, the motion broke, I could not hear the motion.
The amount was $23,023.17, and I supported the motion.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
And then, did Dale have something? I see him, but I don't hear him.
He's gonna have to use sign language.
Yeah, I don't lip read too well, so. He's not muted, but I, I can't, what, what was the question?
I, I just, I see Dale talking, but I don't hear a response, so I just wanted to get clarification before we move further.
Can someone tell Dale just to call in by his phone instead of trying to use his computer?
That would be a good idea.
Okay, so I have a motion by Batsu, um, supported by Hayden, to approve dispersment report ending March 15, 2020, and retroactively authorize payment of village bills in the amount of $23,023.17. Is that correct?
So I'm missing the amount on that page, you know, the final amount. Was there supposed to be a page two?
Okay.
That's what I requested earlier, and that's what came about six, 15, 6:30 this afternoon, the other page.
Oh, alright, I missed that, okay.
Oh, oh.
So, so Dale, you're gonna have to put your phone on mute or hang up from your computer.
Turn down the volume, Dale.
The computer.
Now I should be alright.
Oh, there you are.
Much better.
Okay.
Hey?
Yeah.
So, um, Dale, we have the motion to approve the dispersment report ending March 15, 2020, and retroactively authorize the payment of village bills in the amount of $23,023.17.
Good. Yeah, that's fine.
I have a question on number, uh, 16, the mileage reimbursement for January and February. What was that for, and why?
Okay, so, um, number 16, Bob drives his personal truck around the village.
Why?
And, um, I will let Dale answer that for you.
Which one are we talking about now? 16?
Yeah.
Bob's reimbursement for Bob.
Well, I would have, I would have to look at what he, what he put on his report. I don't have that in front of me.
He has $135 in fuel expenses due to mileage using his personal vehicle, and we have village truck and, uh, and whatnot for him to use. So the question is, why is he driving his personal vehicle?
Well, um, I also believe he's delivering your packets to you as well.
Not for $135.
No.
And that would be delivered, I mean, that would be during his working hours and with the DPW truck.
Did Bob attend any trainings or any conferences or anything like that, that would have mileage associated?
Like I said, I'll have to pull it out.
We'll, we'll have to examine it, and I can get it, get back to you on it. But I know that, you know, I wouldn't have approved it to begin with if there wasn't a reason for it.
Because I, I noticed on the other dispersment, there's another one for him as well, for $64 for March. So, and, and we've never had this in the past, so I'm just, you know, curious as to what it's for and why. Okay.
I can get that for you, but I don't have it on the top of my head.
Okay.
So we're talking about 16, and what was the other one?
Well, the other one is on the other report, um-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the other March one.
Did you say it was number 35?
On the other report, um-
32.
32, yeah.
32.
Yeah. And then, um, a question on the, uh, never mind, never mind. Alright.
So are there any other questions on the February to March dispersments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, um, uh, about the, uh, the phone stipend and all that, uh, for both Scott MacArthur and Mike McCord, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, but for, uh, for Scott and Mike-
Chantagie.
W. Anyway, so, um, it's my understanding that they've been off for some time, so do they still get the, uh, the stipend, you know, for the phone, or what? They do, because there's still, it can be excess. We still have to have an ability to be in contact with them if we need to. Even though they're, they're not working? Even though they're not working, because we, we need, particularly with a new person, we were checking with him as to what medical, what his doctor was telling him, and whether he got tested for the, um, the, the virus. Um, and so, we still had- Um, and so we still had, make phone contact with them.
And this is for February anyways, isn't it, February sixteen to March?
Okay, so they were reimbursed for, um, they were reimbursed for February, but not March.
Yeah, so we're still on the February bills, so that's why they are getting reimbursed in this month still.
Correct.
Okay, because I see them both, uh, also going into the April, I know we're not there yet, but, so, okay. Uh, how long have they both been off? We weren't told about this.
So at this point, we're working on the disbursements, let's get through that, and then if we have trustee comments or questions, we can save that for that moment. This is the February to March disbursement questions. Is there anything further on this one?
Not for me.
I'm good.
All right, so, we have our motion and our support. Um, are we ready, Liz, for a roll call though?
Actually, I just have, uh, Batsu for the motion, who is my support?
Uh, Hayden supported it, me.
Okay. Ashman?
Yes.
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
No.
Skornica, no. Yes.
He can't hear you.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Okay, so I got, um, five to two on that one.
Thank you. And motion carries, five to two. Next up is the April fifteenth disbursements, which would be the March fifteenth to April fifteenth. And can I entertain a motion for those?
I make a motion to approve the disbursement report ending April fifteen, 2020, and pay the village bills in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Support.
That was Dan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Ashman, discussion, questions?
Yeah, again, um, I see for the monthly cellphone, for those two employees, that I, I don't know how long they've been off, so I don't know, you know, do they really qualify for it? I mean, everybody has a responsibility of having a, a phone number available to be, you know, available to contact us, like us, you know? We, we need to be able to have, a bit, you know, the village has to be able to reach out to us. So my question is, that phone stipend, I thought, was to work between the DPW guys and all that when they were doing a job, so.
So, um, Mark, may I interrupt you and ask which line item specifically?
Number eleven and number fourteen.
Okay. Okay, so they were not paid, um, they were paid through the end of the month of February. They have not been paid since then.
Okay.
When did Scott start? Um, I don't know, I, I can get that for you.
Okay, that's fine, just some, you know, sometime tomorrow's fine.
So they were not paid through the end of the month when they quit working? Or were laid off, or?
All right, thank you, Liz.
And then my same question on number thirty-two is to the, the sixty-four forty, what's that mileage for?
And that, that I'm gonna get for you.
Yeah, I saw just, yeah.
We have anything else on the March to April disbursements?
I have, I have a question, this is Mark. Um, item number two, it says Impact North, for seventy-five dollars, when is the?
Um, yes, that is correct. Uh, Mark, we have had several people who we have reimbursed for rental of Old Town Hall.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, and that's what that would be for.
Okay, now I get it, thank you.
So they paid their deposit, but we refunded them then, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I, I would like to ask, uh, for a follow-up regarding the cellphone stipends, because I'm not sure what our personnel policy or unemployment policy state regarding that stipend, whether there's any stipulations on that, that if they are not working for part of a month, that we don't pay that. So I think that needs to be clarified before we just don't pay them the stipend, because if it's something that we have in our terms of employment, you know, I, I, so I just wanna get that clarified to see, um, you know, before we start saying, hey, we shouldn't pay them, or we should pay them or not.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll leave that up to Dale to answer.
Yeah. Doesn't have to be tonight, obviously, but just follow-up, please, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just have a question in regards to line item number thirty, and, you know, here we're, we're coming off, uh, a relatively slow, a few months, a couple months, if you will, and yet we still have an attorney fee of, for the village anyways, of almost five hundred and fifty dollars. And, and I don't understand, why are we using the village attorney, paying five hundred and fifty dollars per month that we, we, you know, we're barely operating on, right? So, um, I, I do see the, uh, the descriptions here, but, you know, why are we contacting, contacting an attorney about a, a deed change, you know? Shouldn't that be someone else's, uh, responsibility?
About what, did you say, about fee change?
A deed, a deed, revised deed.
Dale, it's the attorney fee for, um, I believe, uh, Naren and.
This is an ongoing, ongoing litigation that we were dealing with. With a property that, that had the, the bad fence and the, the pool in the back, we started litigation against them, which I advised all of council about. And we, we were, we're still in the middle of that, although we just recently dismissed the case. So. Ongoing items that we're dealing with the attorney on continue to, to cause expense.
Yeah.
Do we get reimbursed for that?
What?
Do we get reimbursed for the expense because we had to file, you know, some sort of legal on that?
From who?
From the homeowner, or?
Well, we, we potentially could have, if we took the, that clear through, uh, litigation, but they have, the, the pre, the banks that bought the property closed the, the back off, so we, and they have it up for sale. So we have no current issues. So that's why we have now dismissed the case. And so we're not gonna be in a position to recover. But sometimes in litigation, you can be reimbursed for your legal expenses, and sometimes you can't, be, it depends on what the statute says. It's not an automatic thing that you get reimbursed. When we recently had the, the issue with the dumpster, we got reimbursed for our, our legal expenses because we made a, a condition of the settlement.
All right, any other questions on the disbursements from March to April?
I'm good.
All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, and it's supported by Councilman Ashman. Liz, are we ready for a vote, please?
We are. Trustee George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
No.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, um, six to one.
Thank you. Motion carries, six to one. Item number seven will be our public comments, and currently those are on agenda items only. If you have anything that you would like to, um, share on agenda items, you may speak, and you may also type in if you would like us to read them for you.
Oh, I see, um, does Courtney McLaren have her hand up?
She does have her hand up.
We don't have agenda, there is no agenda posted. Um, all that's posted is the explanation of three pages of the explanation of how to get into the meeting. So I don't know what's on the agenda.
That's what I thought was, yeah, I didn't see the agenda earlier, okay.
That's my fault, sorry.
I mean, I'm sure it's three pages of the same thing, so I'm sure, you know, you, you thought it was there, you know, I'm sure it's simple. I'm not, I'm not trying to blame you or anything, I just.
No, I'm done with that.
I had to comment. Can somebody say those three things that are on the, or however many?
Well, it's a little bit different now, but yes, so.
There's four, right, there's the one that trustee Ashman added, but what are the other three?
On our new business, we have the Comcast, um, out on fifteen, um, the cooperative agreement for the CDBG, and, uh, the
Extension of Wayfinding Committee.
Nope, that was moved to unfinished, um.
Yeah, but that was the third thing that wasn't mentioned, I think. Other than moving it.
Okay, correct, yep, I'm looking at my notes, master plan, so and then on unfinished, we have the wayfinding and the master plan. Sorry, I put it in the wrong spot.
So it's just the Comcast and the CDBG that's on the?
Yeah.
It's new business. Unfinished business is the way, is extending the wayfinding committee and, uh, the addition of the master plan. And Dan also asked for adding in committee reports.
Thank you.
That was me, sorry. Any other questions or comments from our public? We do have one. Um, let me read it real quick, before I read out loud. All right, so I'm assuming, Melanie, that you would like this read. Um, it is to everybody, it says, "The directive encourages postponement of meetings unless there is an emergency. Full agendas need to be available eighteen hours ahead of the meeting. That is why they do not want items added to the agenda at this time." My question is, who on council went, or was at the webinar for the Open Meetings Act?
I was.
There's someone trying to get in.
That, that was, oh, so Pete, we do have somebody joining?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, good catch. So, um, Melanie's question was, who on council was at the webinar for the Open Meetings Act? And I believe Liz, you were there, I was there, who else was there?
These are public comments, and we don't interact.
It was a question for us, and we are more than happy to answer if we would like to. All right, um, and she said she was as well. All right, do we have any other public comments from anybody at this time? Or questions, obviously, as well? All right. Thank you very much, Courtney and Melanie. And so item eight will be our consent agenda, we have nothing at this time. Nine is the trustee committee updates. And so I guess we'll start alphabetically, let's go with Mark, Batsu.
Uh, the fire authority board did not meet this month, uh, obvious reasons with COVID-19, and, um, so that's all. There's nothing to report from fire authority.
Thank you. Yeah? Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's Dan.
Yeah, um, I, I don't have anything other than to add to, as to what Dale's gonna add from Bob Hotwell, but with Bob being by himself, and, and, uh, I, I get it, we're all, it's under unprecedented times under COVID, but, you know, those positions out there in the field, and when I say out in the field, we're talking about outdoors, they could easily, um, be, uh, that the task can be done under, um, uh, exceeding the, uh, uh, social distance of six feet, and still be able to do your job. So, so I feel bad for Bob that he's out there by, on his own, I think, um, I think we need to reconsider getting his staff back in, uh, in, um, uh, uh, online and, and helping him, and, uh, that's all I gotta report right now.
If I could, I just wanna comment, I had a discussion with Bob today about that, and we will be bringing Mike back shortly.
What's shortly?
As, as soon as we can.
Well, what's the holdup, or what, what are we waiting for?
Bob and I just had a discussion about that this afternoon, and I asked him to make contact with him, I don't know the date and time yet.
Thank you. All right, uh, Dan, is that all that you had, or did you have anything else?
No, that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
No, nothing to report.
Thank you. Larry?
Uh, well, planning commission last met in March, we did not have an April meeting. I know that the master plan and the bids were up, I believe we did select a bid, but I don't have the minutes in front of me. Liz, do you remember which bid we selected from that?
Um, I believe it was, uh, Carlisle-Wartman.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I remembered too, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the master plan, we accepted the comments, and, and, um, I don't remember if there's anything else that we need to do with that.
We have to hold a public hearing.
That is correct.
And that, that's pretty much, that's pretty much shit from, uh, planning commission at that point, those two items were the important ones.
All right. And who's up next, that would be Mark, right, Robinson, am I going in order?
Sounds all right to me, so, um, a few things I have, as far as like wayfinding and that. Um, so it was about three months ago that Matt Bailey said that he was going to be stepping down, and because he was gonna be moving out of the area. And so I reached out to Matt Jenkins to find out who his replacement was going to be. I didn't hear back, and so I reached out to him again, um, I don't know, almost two months ago, uh, right before COVID, uh, nineteen happened. And I still haven't heard back from Matt to find out about that. And, but meanwhile, um, uh, I know Liz, uh, she, uh, Mark Batsu and I, we kinda put, uh, together like a signage, and Liz went out, and she found somebody to help us out with that, and volunteer some signs, I believe that offer still is out there, right, Liz?
I believe so, yes, that would be MRJ Sign Company.
Okay, and, um, so I, I don't know if that's something we can vote on tonight to accept it, so we can get this moving and get those signs posted. But, uh, anyway, uh.
You would have to amend the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Wow, I'm surprised that wasn't carried over from before, and especially with the conversations that both Liz, Dale, and I did have on that two months ago, so. But, all right, um, then the other thing is, there's a, there's an old mill sign that, um, has been requested to be put back up there, especially with the, uh, the blacksmith shop that's gonna be, you know, open here the season and all that, and I know we've been trying to get that old mill sign replaced, you know, or, uh, it's supposed to be taken off, um, refurbished and put back on, and it's been brought up several times, but nothing's happened, so I don't know if anybody can, uh, update us on that.
Um, so the old mill sign, um, it has been asked a couple of times why the sign hasn't been put back up, and according to Bob, all the signs are up, so, um, as far as refurbishing or fixing, I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, that, that came from last year sometime.
I had a conversation, uh, with Colleen Skornica earlier today, and I'm gonna be talking to Bob about that.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you, Mark, so next up is Colleen.
Well, um, I was gonna bring up the old mill, but, um, that's covered with Mark. Um, the historical society did not meet due to the pandemic, and IT did not meet. Um, just a side note, I'm not sure why IT wasn't contacted to, um, or. Just a side note, I'm not sure why IT wasn't contacted to or instrumental in virtual meetings, but I guess it's water under the bridge now. But just no other comments for committee updates for me.
And Colleen, I actually have, we did get our quotes back from IT right to update our IT closet. So I need to get that back to you.
Oh, great, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Colleen, considering our situation now with the virtual meetings and potential for needing to have better capacity, is increasing capacity of our conference calls something IT committee would also look into? And also enabling like if somebody needed to work outside of the office, like much of us are, many of us are doing now, like through a VPN connection or something?
We would contact our IT and work through that, our IT right, but yes.
Okay, because I think we should maybe review our capabilities in those areas, you know, conference call.
We've been getting some information on that.
Okay.
And some pricing.
That sounds good. I know other communities do that sort of thing and.
Well, we can, yeah, we can take a look at it once that all, once that information comes in. But right now, there's only two of them in the office right now anyway, so.
Yeah.
You know, in time, so, all right, well, we can take a look at that, but nothing else for me.
All right, thank you. So with the DDA, the DDA has obviously not met as well with all of the orders. The wayfinding committee, they have not had a chance to appoint anybody at this point without meeting. They also have a couple of board appointments that they would like to make that will be on a future agenda for us as well. So those are the two things that they're waiting on.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit? I mean, what board appointments?
The DDA board. They have, now that Matt has left, they also need to fill that appointment. They have another one as well. So they would like to bring a couple of people to us.
Matt Bailey.
What did I say?
You just said Matt, so.
Oh, Matt Bailey.
Yeah, Matt Bailey left as president. But we still have Matt Jenkins as our.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was following Mark's conversation where, when he said about Matt Bailey. Yeah, so those two items need to be addressed when they get a chance to meet as well. So I know that's on their list of things to do. They've spent a lot of time working with the local businesses. They've really been working hard and I give a lot of kudos to everybody on the DDA. Very, very, very hard to try to get these businesses, grants and loans and, you know, access to things. So I just want to give that quick shout out.
Also on that note, this is Mark Robinson. I just want to let everybody know that it came down from Joe Frost, who was part of Oakland County and Matt Bailey that. And I just want to reiterate, this is a long dragged out process. I mean, even when we met last year, there's many of us who sat around the table on that. And it could take you up until sometime in the fall before the ball really starts rolling on this. So I don't want anybody to think anybody's dragging feet or anything like that. It's just a long dragged out process because then we have to wait for the grant money to come in and all that to be able to move forward. Okay?
For wayfinding, correct?
Yes, wayfinding.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. And so that's the DDA update. The other update that we have as well would be the personnel. Personnel has had a couple of meetings. The first one was Dale's review, his six-month review. And we had a chance to go over that with him. Had a couple of good conversations, recommendations from both sides. And we also had a personnel meeting with our staff and the manager as well. And looking at implementing some further communication enhancements, some weekly staff meetings, things to ensure that communication is more clear. And especially during this time with everybody working different places, different days, it gives them a chance to really kind of be all on the same page. So those are a couple of our goals that we've had over the past month. With that.
Yeah, if I could just add real quick on personnel. The other thing is that we are recognizing, especially with this situation, that there are still some significant gaps in our personnel policies. We're currently working up on a draft of a work from home policy that we will be bringing to the council as soon as we have that completed. And we're also continuing to look for where there's other gaps in the policies so that we can fill those holes and as we find those and create the updated policies, we'll be bringing them to council.
All right, thank you. And next up is our new business. And that will be 10A, which is the Comcast franchise agreement. Dale, did you want to share information with us?
Yeah, I did. The, from the material that you received, this is primarily what the new franchise Comcast company is doing is on Main Street in the business section. They're really not looking to go through all the residential in the community. And they will be doing some improvements or some additions in their hardware through the right of ways. So I have prepared for you a motion that I believe resolves this. You've got a copy of what the franchise agreement would be. And the motion I'm recommending to you is I move that the Village of Ortonville enter into a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Comcast to provide cable services to Village users in the designated areas with payment by Comcast to the Village of a 5% franchise fee to be executed by the Village manager.
So we're looking to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for the Village of Ortonville to enter into a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Comcast to provide cable services to Village users in the designated areas with payment to the Village of Ortonville of a 5% franchise fee to be executed by the Village manager.
And do we have support? All right, I will support that.
All I can say is it was one long document to try to read through everything on there.
Yeah.
So that's my next question. Do we have questions or comments on that as you read through that?
So where is the designated areas again? Could you share that with everyone?
Actually, I think we cannot because it states from the provider that this is confidential. So I think we are not allowed to share that information, if I'm not mistaken by what I read.
So, but basically it's on the map that's on the very back, right?
Um, Dale, may I?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually business customers along M15 at this point.
So it's nothing residential within that confinement?
They're generally, my understanding is that they're generally only going to serve businesses in the designated mapped area, which is both Ortonville Road and the Mill Street corridor.
Correct.
I'm just double checking.
And the township has already given their approval, correct?
Yes.
How does this affect our complete franchise fee agreement with them?
With the other company?
Yes.
It doesn't. They're both non-exclusive agreements.
Yep, you can have multiple franchises in the same area.
Yes.
Was there a competitive bid over this area? Or how was it determined that Comcast was going to do this over someone else?
Well, Comcast just came in and made the proposal. We didn't seek them out.
This is not bid it out, no.
No, we did not bid it out. We didn't bid for another service, but they have a right under Michigan state law to make this kind of a proposal. And from the most recent changes in all of the franchising law, we don't have a whole lot to say. As a matter of fact, even though we're acting on this tonight, this whole agreement is approved by law within like 15 days of when they put it in.
Uh huh.
Yeah, this is just a process. They apply for a franchise and as the municipality, we have to essentially agree to the franchise within a certain timeframe.
Right. The only thing that we have any say over is zoning matters. Like if they wanted to put it somewhere where our zoning ordinance would not allow, then we would have something to say.
Yeah, and the only other aspect is the franchise fee, which we have as 5%, which is the maximum we can, we could put on a franchise fee already.
Correct. Right.
What is the value of that 5%?
It's 5% of their revenues goes to a public access fee basis, which is part of our general fund income.
Right, so do we know what that approximately 5% value is?
No. Because it depends entirely on what customers they get.
Within that district, within that zone?
And they have to make a report to us on it when they collect.
And just curiosity, I'd assume that the businesses are getting some type of business deal or whatever. Obviously, we have residents in that zone too. So why are they just targeting, why are they just targeting businesses and not residents within the same area?
I think it's their business model, who they're interested in serving. They don't have to serve everybody. Under the old, when this, when cable first came in, the communities had a right to tell them who they had to serve, how they had to serve. Because I was township supervisor when that came through independence and we required the cable company to provide service to everybody in the community, even if it wasn't economically to the benefit of the cable company. And we were allowed to do that. You can't do that anymore. Among a lot of other things, you can't do anymore.
All right, so, and then this agreement, if I remember, the last franchise agreement that we had, we actually split with Brandon Township, if I remember, and they gave us the portion of whatever the amount was. Are you saying that this 5% does not go through Brandon? That we would be just strictly dealing with any customers within the Village boundaries? And we would get 5% of those sales?
That's my understanding. For the ones that are in the Village.
Do we have any other questions regarding the franchise agreement? All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Hayden and it's supported by President Biden. Liz, can we please have a roll call, one on that? George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Buttsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yeah.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Item B is the 2021 through 23 Village Oakland Cooperative Agreement for the CDBG.
And that actually was put on the agenda by me. We have to renew this agreement every three years with Oakland County where we say we want their funds, government funds. And it's, other than that, I mean, there's nothing else. I mean, just, do we want to do CDBG for either Brandon-Grohl and Youth or OSEF? And if yes, we need to approve this.
So we're looking to entertain a motion?
So you're saying with, we don't have to declare either one, but if we are planning to use it for OSEF and whatever we do.
If we plan to use their funds, we have to approve this resolution.
And if we're doing it in this form, if you, there was a document provided to you, I believe, dated April of 16th, 2020. And at the back, it says that they want an email to them to indicate that the Village intends to opt in to the Oakland County Urban County Program. Oh, excuse me. For the program years 2021 to 2023 and remain through automatic renewals and successive three-year qualification periods or until such time as that is in the best interest of the Village to terminate the cooperative agreement. That, if you approve staying with this, that's the email we'll send them.
So I do have a question, Dale. So we approved this in the past. I'm a little confused there if it's the one that we did not approve, right? But we approved this in the past and we're just going to keep this going every three years. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And this is so we can fund, we can't typically name our, who we're going to get the money to, but it's typically so we can fund BGYA and OSEF.
Well, since we're having this discussion and we really should have a motion first, I'll make a motion to have clerk, to direct the clerk to indicate to Oakland County via email that the Village of Ortonville intends to opt in to the Oakland County Urban County Program for program years 2021 through 2023 and will remain through automatic renewals and successive three-year qualification periods.
Support.
And that was, who supported?
Dan.
Thank you.
I think that I would recommend to the council that the email and that language come from the manager.
Actually, Dale, it's typically the clerk who does that. But if you want it to come from the manager, that's fine.
It's up to the council.
Well, according to the job duties, it is for the clerk. If we choose to do something different, we can talk about that at another time.
I'd like to hear from Dale why he thinks it should come from him.
Well, I think that any policy issues, any policy type item that comes from the Village should come through the township manager. I mean, through the Village manager.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why that we have to actually state a position to who's going to do the email, right? So we have some type of Village of Ortonville representation sending that email to Oakland County. Why we have to be a position specific on who's going to send it in this, in the motion? I'm not, I'm not really sure why. I mean, it would be to have the Village of Ortonville send an email.
Because it's going to be me sending the email. I mean, that's, that's basically it. I mean, if Dale wants to send it, that's up to him. But I handle everything with CDBG.
Mark Buttsu, did you have something to say? It looked like you were trying to say something.
Yeah, this is Mark. I think more weight, I agree with Dan. Anybody could send them. But at this point, I'd like the Village manager to handle this in that any decisions that may be over the head of us or anybody else can go right to the Village manager. I think that's in his wheelhouse. So that's my input.
Okay, the CDBG grants are handled by all clerks in all areas. That is in our job description for our clerk. So if these are things that we'd like to change, we need to look at this at a totally different time and change this. But at this point, the email needs to be sent out as always done as we decided with our procedures that we have in place. So if we'd like to change those procedures, we'll have to do that at a different time.
I understand, okay.
So currently, the procedure is for the clerk to do it?
Correct.
Or we could suspend the rules and make the change and do that now. You can suspend the rules and change it, but whatever the council wants to do, that is an option.
We can move on and do it later, I don't care.
Yeah.
I've done it for the last three years, so.
Yeah. I'm just letting the council know the option.
I'd like to see it go out and we can revisit it at another time when it's something that is not important on a non-important list instead of an essential meeting.
This is essential.
No, no, I'm saying revisiting if we were to change your job description.
Okay.
All right, is there any further questions on that information? We have a motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Ashman at this point.
And that was what again, for Liz or for Dale, which one?
It's for.
It was for the clerk.
For the clerk?
Send notice to Oakland County via email.
That's fine, okay.
Good question. All right. So Liz, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes. So I have Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yeah.
Buzu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got seven zero. So thank you. Motion carries seven zero.
And next up, we have our, looks like my mess here, unfinished business, which is 11. And first up is the wayfinding, and that would be.
I think, Tanya, I had a bullet under new business. Did you put rules of procedures slash person, Personnel Committee under new business or unfinished business?
Oh, yes, that was new business.
Yep. And that's, remember when I said I couldn't read my writing? Nobody piped up. Okay, that was my rules and procedures. Thank you. I had a spot. So that would be item C, which is the rules and procedures personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, and the reason why I'm calling this essential is, I don't think I have to really lecture or talk to anybody about what's happened over the last month and a half to two months within our country and even locally, right? So we've heard from the Planning Commission Committee, Planning Committee members, which was Tanya and Larry. We heard from the DDA, which is Tanya. We heard from from the Personnel Committee, which is Tanya and Larry. But you know what? Under those circumstances and what we've been through, I've heard no accounts or, other than the policy of staying-at-home policy. But what are we doing to protect our employees from a come-back-to-work policy for COVID-19? What are we drafting up to protect our employees? What are we doing at the office to protect our employees? Things like that, the Personnel Committee needs to be taking above and beyond and making it a priority above these other items that, okay, need to be taken, but because of what's been going on, priorities need to be taken. And and I got to tell you, as much as I commend Tanya and Larry for for volunteering all these committees, I don't believe we have enough people on the committee to sort out what truly needs to be done to protect our employees. We've had a, a, our DPW employees not feeling comfortable about coming into work. Maybe it's because we don't have policies to protect him. I don't know what those issues were. I didn't feel those questions or concerns. We have people that are working from home and and getting paid for it, quite frankly. They they were working two days and getting home in pain, continuing to get their full pay, whatever that pay may be. And and that's fine if 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 they are doing work from home, but I have concerns overpaying somebody sitting at home and and not working from home. So we didn't really hear about, okay, are are those employees working from home as well, or are they just getting paid to sit at home? There are a lot of things that need to be addressed. So therefore, I did put this on because I believe an additional person needs to be added to the Personnel Committee. And at this time, I'd like to put, to make a motion to, under our Rules of Procedures, section number four, item A5, it talks about the Village of Ortonville Village Council Personnel Committee. And in that, there's two sentences there. I'm I'm looking to amend the second second sentence to strike the words "no more than." So the, my motion now would would go to council for council's consideration to help get these things done, and it would read as follows: The purpose and scope, the Personnel Committee researches and advises the Village Council on various matters relating to personnel policies and practices. The committee consists of three council members and the village manager. Period.
Where are we at? Dan, can you repeat the page number and?
It was section F, item, item A5, page 14, and it would be the very last item on that page.
Okay. And can I just pipe in? Am I allowed?
There's a motion on, there's a motion on the table first, all right?
You looking for support?
Yes, I am.
Support.
Can I pipe in now?
Sure.
Sure.
Right ahead.
Um, no, I actually get residents who text me on my phone on a Sunday. And want me to keep up with their stuff.
I'm sorry, is this Liz?
Yes.
Okay, Liz, this is not about you or anything about what you're doing at home, all right? This has to do with the Personnel Committee and generating policies around COVID-19 and protecting our employees. And when they come back to work, what are we going to do to protect our employees? And we can't just tell them to stay home or go on layoff because they're worried about what could happen. We need to have affirmative policies on how we're going to protect our employees when they come back and when they're working at home, or when they're working here in the village. So that's what it has to do with. So the the discussion now should be amongst our, our trustees. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize. You're fine, Liz. You're welcome to have a question.
So Dan, this is Larry. First of all, I appreciate you bringing this up. I think it is important, and it is definitely on our minds within Personnel Committee about the safety of our employees. To this point, when the executive orders came out, our village manager, who is responsible for managing our employees, he did come up with a policy and sets of procedures that he felt would be appropriate to protect their safety in these times. He did inform Personnel about that. We reviewed them, and we we felt that they were appropriate. At this point, I think that what we are doing, because we have a village manager in place to manage the employees and to take care of these day-to-day operations, that we are relying and trusting him to come up with the appropriate practices and procedures and rules. Because with council only meeting once a month, it's really difficult to respond in an ever-changing situation like COVID-19. So I I really appreciate you bringing up this topic, but I think that our best action is to really put our trust in the village manager and our staff to work together to come up with the best procedures that they're comfortable with and to protect themselves. Because we just cannot be responsive enough if we're only meeting once a month, is my feeling.
But you guys are meeting more than once a month.
Exactly why I put this motion up there. That mindset, Larry, is exactly why I put this motion up there. We need to be proactive, and it's not up to our employees to come up with those policies. It's up to the Personnel Committee to protect our employees. They need to know we have their back. When they come into work, they're protected. And they're not going to leave it up to them, Larry. It's wrong.
What it's left up to is the state executive orders, and they decide what we are doing and when we come back and how we come back. And we follow those to a T. We are making sure that we are on every single topic that we are supposed to be in the order that we're supposed to be in the timeframe that they are.
Yeah.
And then that is for Dale to follow through with.
Why isn't the rest of council being made aware of anything that's happening? Larry, at one time, you said we're, you guys are meeting, we're meeting once a month, but then you also stated that you guys have met on other occasions, but nobody on on the rest of the council has been made aware of any of these items.
Well, as you, as you're aware of.
You and I, we spoke along the the highway there over a month ago, and and I told you about all the rumors we've been hearing on the streets, and you guys not making anybody on council aware that there's issues going on with personnel within the office area.
Um, all of, besides the very last one that I have not typed up, all of the personnel minutes are in documents on demand and available to all of the council at any time?
Not everybody's on documents on demand.
We all are. We all have to have the right to have access to it. And if we need to do our job correctly, we have to have access to documents on demand. That's where all of the information is. All of our IT minutes should be there, all of our personnel minutes.
We made a decision a long time ago that it would be available for both, for people with documents on demand access and the other, everybody else. We we decided a long time ago that we all would have access to that. You guys would be putting out the minutes for it.
Do you have, are you giving your minutes to all of us? Is IT giving minutes to all of us?
Are all the committees doing this? Why is personnel being singled out for having to do that if none of the other committees?
I have nothing to report on wayfinding, except for what we do once a month. But you, you two are, well, I mean, I told you before, I've told you the last three or four times that we've had our regular monthly council meetings, that I have nothing to report because there's nothing going to happen until months down the road, right? So, but you guys have already been meeting, and you're not making us aware, the rest of the council aware, of anything going on.
Mark, if I could also, if I could also remind you, one of one of my concerns about speaking too much outside of a of an open meeting in the front of the council is because we are bound by the Open Meetings Act. We can't just talk amongst ourselves about things like that if there's any type of decision or deliberation or move towards some kind of a decision on the council. So we really are really restricted on how much we can we can talk about that outside of an Open Meetings Act.
You know, you know, Larry, you're absolutely right. That's why they have closed meetings, Larry. You're absolutely right. But Personnel Committee in the past, and it should be led in the future, full transparency with the with the trustees. And if we have to talk about something privately, then we go into a closed session.
Yes, I agree with you, Dan. And what we were doing is, because we had some reviews coming up, and there was, as Mark had pointed out, there was some issues that were identified. We met with all the people. We put together some proposals and are asking them to try to follow them and see what comes of that, which we were going to share with you as soon as we could.
When? I mean, I heard about this three months ago out on the street from several people, and I got to hear about this on the street, but personnel can't tell council what's going on? Come on, something wrong with that.
You know, this is Buzu over here, and I'd just like to chip in my two cents, which is, as a trustee, I shouldn't have to hear it from a neighbor that one of our DPW employees is not working, is laid off. I would expect a phone call, a text, if it's in documents on demand, well, I guess you cover, you cover yourself on that one. But a simple phone call to say, hey, look, we're going to lay this off. Just wanted to give you a.
And you should have, you should have gotten that. And I I apologize. That's my fault. I thought that I had sent something out to council, as I did send to all of council regarding our change in staffing for the office, to make sure that we we kept, kept the place as sanitary as we could. When when the the layoff occurred, I thought that I had done that, and in retrospect, it looks like I had did that. And I apologize.
So these items that you're questioning, and I'm not pushing this on Dale, these are village manager decisions. Dale manages the employees. Personnel does not manage the employees. So the questions and the concerns that you have in which you're tacking personnel for, which is not going to happen, those are.
You're the ones that addressed this.
Those are not.
Larry addressed this.
Those are for the manager to address with his staff, how he manages his staff. If there are concerns at that level, it then comes to personnel. So that is when a concern came to us, which we have addressed currently in this past month. And that's the first time that we have addressed that issue.
And, uh,
That's, that's not the way personnel needs to be. It's not a reactionary committee. Eight hours out there setting policies out ahead of the game, not after the fact, to protect our employees. You can't sit around and wait. And guess what? Dale's the village manager. You're absolutely right. But we're setting policies to protect our employees. Our, our Personnel Committee needs to be working in concert with our village manager to set these policies to protect our employees, and not just our employees, but our residents as well. The residents have been coming to our offices and talk with our employees, right? How are we going to set up our business such that we're going to protect everybody? And it's not just about Dale, all right? It's about our Personnel Committee working in concert with our village manager to do the job. And that's not being done.
It will be done when the state gives us directives as to what those should be.
Oh, you need, you need someone to tell you what to do to how to keep your people safe?
Uh, Dan, I, I, let me just share this with you. I went to an MML, uh, MML session about the governor's executive orders and directives. And they made it very clear that when the government is, the governor is exercising her emergency powers, local municipalities have no authority to moderate or modify or change or adjust any of the things that are coming out of the governor's office. We have no authority. We have to follow exactly whatever the governor's office puts out under these times, until that is lifted. Until that time comes, we can't change anything that's coming out from the executive orders, okay? So just to be clear, we are under a legal constraint that we cannot avoid. Now, I do agree with you, we should not forward to see what can we do when we do, when they do relax those orders, but that's not going to happen until at least May 15th at this point, it looks like.
So so what is, what are we doing to push that on our employees? We're not under legalities to have our employees wear masks. We're not under legalities to have our employees complete a simple three, four questionnaire about who they've been around and have they been in contact with anybody, et cetera, when they come into work. We're not under authority to have a temperature check to make sure our employees do not have temperatures and are still coming into work. Guess what? You don't need government to tell you to do those things to protect our employees. And if you wait, it's too late. All right? Larry, that's exactly what I'm telling you. We need an additional person to help the Personnel Committee get these things in order, not to just sit around and wait to be told what to do.
And if.
I I would suggest that, I would, I would suggest that if you feel that strongly about that, Dan, and when you feel that we need to address these policies, perhaps we should schedule a special meeting in the councils so that we can discuss all of these topics specifically and come up with a plan for how our village should move forward with that. Because I think it would be a good idea to get the whole council input in this direction. That might be a good format to go into more detail on some of the other topics about Personnel Committee. I had suggested to Tanya that tonight we should just have a summary of what's been going on with Personnel. And I had already thought it might be a good idea to have a meeting with the full council in attendance so we can discuss personnel matters, because there are several topics I would like to go into in more detail, but we don't have that on the agenda for tonight. So I think we should not go into too much detail tonight. But I think it would be a good idea to have a a meeting where we can all sit down and discuss the topics together, our policies and such.
But also, I think in Tanya's Personnel Committee update, she mentioned about that you guys met and gave a six-month review. I don't recall receiving anything for a review for the manager in putting, or or the what the, what the output of that review was, what, based on what? We don't do six-months reviews. And if you did do that, then where, you know, where's council's information on that review?
And that's what I said.
Or to provide, excuse me, or to provide feedback for for that, so we could, you know, have seen that before. Council usually would have an input in it, or at least know what type of review and what was given. And we have no knowledge of that until you gave that update tonight.
And as I said, the minutes are not complete for that. That will be on the minutes. And that was.
But that's after the fact. You you already gave him his review, though, right?
Correct. That was done in-house because of the communication conflicts that have been had, and that is one of the ways which we felt to gauge those conflicts. So those were not.
Maybe council members would have had some insight as well, and it could have all been rolled out to troubleshoot on those areas so that everything could have been a troubleshooting of what may have, you know, what would be the best approach, rather than two people and personnel. But I would like to see what that review consisted of. I'm sorry, what?
That's something that we can consider when we meet together, and we say we would like to have these discussions as to what would be solutions.
Uh, this is Mark, I think, and I'd just like to add once again, I'll beat it again, a simple phone call with what's going on, rather than trying to maybe have scheduled a meeting, just the common courtesy of maybe the Personnel Committee calling the the other trustees on, in in something that's as important as this, and keeping them up to speed or getting them up to speed. I don't think that's going against the law.
That would be a concern, to violate the open meetings. We need to do that as a group together to address it as a whole on a page at the same time.
And that's why I suggest that we should have a meeting with all of us to talk about this.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor.
Correct. Is there any further questions or discussions on that? All right, Liz, could you please read the motion for us one more time?
Um, so, the motion was from trustee Eshman. Um, give me one second, to go into the rules of procedure. Bear with me. Um, uh, motion by Eshman and seconded by Robinson to update the Village of Ortonville Village Council Personnel Committee. Is that correct?
It was under Section F A5, all right? And under that bullet is the Village of Ortonville Village Council Personnel Committee, and I'm, I'm amending that, um, that, those two sentences, the second sentence, I am amending it by striking the three words that say "no more than", so that the last sentence reads, "The committee consists of three council members and the village manager."
Okay. I've got it. So, it's, um, it's under the committees, A5, I'm sorry, F A5. Purpose and scope: The Personnel Committee researches and advises the village council on various matters relating to personnel policies and practices. The committee consists of three council members and the village manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none. Liz, can we please have a roll call?
We can. Um, we are at Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Bryce? No? Batsu?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
George?
No.
Um, did I get everyone?
No, you didn't get me. I'm a no.
Okay, Hayden? Sorry?
No.
Okay, so it actually passes, um, four to three. Thank you. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. So, so that doesn't finish what I wanted to talk about under this. So, obviously, that leaves an opening on the Personnel Committee, and as a council as a whole, I would like to be able to come up with one, uh, council trustee tonight to fill that open position based off of what we just approved.
According to Michigan law, we have to defer to the village president to nominate the appointee, and then we can vote on approving or not approving her appointment.
Um, well, then, I'd like to make a motion then, in, in keeping that in mind, and I agree probably with you there, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules of procedures, um, under this topic.
What do you mean suspend? I, I don't understand how you suspend rules of procedures. This is the General Law Village Act. What do you mean?
Are we postponing?
I just did a support. We can't discuss it till there's a support.
Support.
I, okay.
Who is my support?
Mark Robinson.
Okay, thank you.
I thought Colleen did.
I did, yeah, I did first, yeah.
It was Colleen's voice that I heard, but...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Real quick, um...
My voice isn't that deep.
No, I, I heard you come on, but then...
No, I know.
So, um, Dan, can you please read your motion?
I'd like to make the motion, and if, I thought that the, um, the rules of procedures spelled out that, and rightfully so, that the president was nominating, um, committee, um, committee, uh, chairs, if you will, with, uh, council trustees, uh, approval, so...
Dan, I don't think you understand my point. My point is that that is merely restating what is in the General Law Village Act, which is a public act of the state of Michigan. We cannot make a motion that's contrary to the General Law Village Act, which is a law of the state of Michigan.
Which, the, the General Law Village, this is in conjunction with the General Law Village that we have the right to suspend the rules.
All right, so, can I...
Thank you.
Dan's motion first.
Yes. So, looking to suspend, I'm looking, I'm sorry?
Can I have the motion, please?
Um, the motion was to suspend rules of procedure as it relates to the Personnel Committee.
Selection, I'm sorry, it was the committee selection.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about our rules of procedure, not the General Law Village Act?
They're one and the same.
No, they're not. We have our rules of procedure.
Correct, correct.
And then there's the General Law Village Act, which we cannot suspend.
Yes, there's, there's suspension in the, in the General Law Village that you can suspend the rules, and that's how we have it in our rules of procedure while it's in there too, following the General Law Act. It is in there, Larry. I can send it to you if you don't have that.
Can we, can we ask Dale for an opinion on the legality of going contrary to the General Law Village Act?
There's, there's a reason. There's a reason why we have our own Ortonville Village, uh, rules of procedures, and they do supersede some of those procedures you're referring to, um, Larry, and, and according to, and I agree with trustee Skornica, that by suspending the rules of procedures under this topic, and this topic is the selection of Personnel Committee member, all right? We should be able to suspend it and be able to fill that seat tonight.
Well, just, just in general comment, the, the village council can suspend its own rules of procedure as long as they're not a requirement of the state enabling act and the state law with regard to those items. Um, and with regard to the appointment power of the village president, I'm not sure whether she has the same power she has with regard to the planning commission as, and that's a, a rule that's the same for townships or villages, that she has the, the power to appoint, and the council only has the power to approve or disapprove of her appointment. I'm, I'm not familiar whether or not that extends to all committee appointments, like the Personnel Committee as well, um, so...
We can, we can do it one of two ways then. Uh, Tanya, you can certainly make your recommendation for that third person on, on the Personnel Committee, and then we would go to a vote to, to put that third person on the Personnel Committee. I'm not against that. I don't think anybody on this call would be.
Well, if you, if you do, if you do that, and if you leave it to the, to the president to make a recommendation for the third person, since it's already passed, that it, it has to be three, um, you, you don't need to suspend the, the rules to let her make her recommendation.
It would only be suspending to have the appointment suggestion come from somebody other than the president.
Correct.
Well, and, and the point that I'm making is if it, if it's your local rule that she does it, that's one thing, you could suspend that, but if it is a state requirement, you can't.
If our local rule that we, that states it, and it's not, it's not the state governed rule, because that's why we wrote it in the rules of procedures from the beginning.
Actually, Dan, when you read the General Law Village Act, I was not clear on this until I actually read through all the definitions. Basically, villages besides required committees, they can appoint additional committees as they seem fit for the operation of the village, and people who are appointed to those committees are considered officials of the village. And then further down under the appointment portion, it states that the village president is the person who nominates or fills all appointed position of non-elected official, since committee positions are non-elected positions, that means that according to the General Law Village Act, these people are village officials because they're on committees that were formed by the village, and therefore, the, the president is the, or the chief executive is the one who fills those appointments. This is directly in the General Law Village Act, and our rules were only crafted to follow that, but it is in the General Law Village Acts written that way, and so I do not...
And it's in the procedure written that way.
But that...
It's written, that's the way our, our rules of procedure, Larry, are written as well.
Yes, but our general, the General Law Village Act is the state law, and we can't do something contradictory to the General Law Village Act.
We're not, we're not.
If we suspend our rules and we say, okay, we're going to fill it instead of the village president, now if she's going to nominate, that's fine.
No, we can suspend, and also the suspension of, and it's not just this, it's just, we all have the power to suspend the rules, that's following Robert's rules.
To suspend Robert's rules, yes.
No.
We cannot contradict Michigan law.
I, I'm not contradicting Michigan law, but if we have an attorney on the call and we're probably being charged for this, let's get his opinion.
This is Mike Gilner. I just logged on, so my, my other meeting just ended, so, uh, I, I jumped on and then my battery died and I lost you, logged back on. Um, so, I apologize, first of all, I'm not jumping into this midstream. What I'm hearing is that there has been a, a, uh, the Personnel Committee has been changed from two members to, uh, four members.
No. From up to three council members to three council members.
Three council members with the village manager, right?
Which is what it always was in the past.
Okay. And then there was a, um, a suggestion or a motion by Mr. Eshman to, uh, fill those, those spots. And then there was a motion made to suspend the, the rules. I agree with the principle that we can't change state law. The question that I have, and, and I'm not going to be able to look at it while I'm on this, uh, during this meeting right now, is, um, whether it is with council, whether it's, it's by the president's nomination with council approval, first of all, uh, that seems to be when the fight is over, presidentism, uh, because the motion, the rules I took is to avoid that. Uh, first of all, do I understand that correctly?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that anybody on this call would, would go against, uh, Tanya's recommendation, I mean, uh, to follow that procedure. We just want to fill it tonight because we got some urgent things to take care of on the Personnel Committee, as already discussed in our meeting.
Okay, so, Dan, then maybe we can clear this up, but Dan, if you're willing to just abide by the standard rules and, and allow Tanya to nominate, and then we approve or, or not approve, then if you just withdraw the motion, we can move forward with that, I think.
Tanya, are you all right with that, Tanya?
Uh, I had no idea that this was a conversation this evening, so not necessarily. I mean, I have no idea about looking at this laid out, what this would look like.
Laid out? You're talking about filling an additional Personnel Committee seat. There's six people that you get to choose from.
Right. Without talking to...
That's been five, five with Larry on it already.
Dan, can I ask you a, a question that I'm not sure of? So, right now, there's two people on the Personnel Committee, um, regarding our employees in the village, they, they report to Dale, the manager.
Right.
From a voting standpoint, if we're voting on Personnel policies, and I'm asking you this, Dan, does, so obviously, Tanya and Larry have a vote. Does Dale also have a vote? Are there technically three votes involved in, in company personnel-wise? Is that the way you understand it, or?
No.
Everyone on, everyone on council has a right to vote.
No, I, I agree with that. I'm just saying that right now on the Personnel Committee, I think the main problem I, I see with the Personnel Committee, Mark Batsu mentioned it, uh, I think very, very clearly, and I've said it before too, going back to his position while we were interviewing for that, it's merely, and it's a lack of information coming down to us. And I agree with, with Mark Batsu, when I, and Dan, I agree with regarding COVID-19 concerns on employee health issues and things like that. I agree with Mark, uh, B, I would like to know what's going on with that. Colleen, I agree with you on the six-month review. I would like to know what's happening with that six-month review. So, I agree with all these things. Uh, and I stagger back to the manager's position when it was, when we were looking, uh, back probably in the summer of a year ago. And that simply has a lack of information getting to us, and in, in that regard, I, I feel I'm out of it. So, I guess my question would be, if we add another person to the Personnel Committee, three, how does it work from a voting standpoint? I mean, how does a general issue comes up? Is it, is it between those three? Does Dale have a voice to this, or, or what? Or, or is the entire council? That's the part I'm confused on, because again, I simply come back to the main issue is a lack of information getting to us, and that needs to be fixed.
I, I think Mark Robinson could probably give some, uh, perspective on that, because he used to be on the Personnel Committee with us before you said it was too much work for him.
No, I didn't say it was too much work.
And I will say, Marcus, when we were on there...
Who mentioned my name? Yeah, I didn't say it was too much work for me. Yeah, I just wanted clarification, you know, before you elaborate too much. I said because I was out of town traveling with my job so much, I was afraid I wasn't going to be available enough because my boss had retired, it was, it led to more responsibility on me, and I didn't want to be leaving the Personnel Committee hanging, so that's why I stepped down with a, with a much, you know, notice of like a month or two notice, you know what I mean?
Yeah, my, my apologies, didn't mean to misstate that. And by the way, I just want to say, we did really appreciate you, your, you when you were on there, by the way. Um, but normally, we would sit and we would just discuss, and then we would generally come to a consensus on what we felt was the best, uh, way to move forward with certain policies, and I think that we should also take a look on what the Personnel Committee is supposed to do. It doesn't say we're managing the employees. It says we're to review the policies and make recommendations to council, and that's what we're trying to do. Um, unfortunately, there has been some things come up that has required some extra effort on our part to try to sort out some things going on in, in, um, the offices, and, and it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is, and, and, you know, we, we also, when we have these discussions with people, we also try to respect their confidentiality. People are very open and candid with us, and I try to respect that when they share information with us, so we, I try to respect their, um, you know, the, the fact that they're honest and open and, and candid with us, and so we, there are some things that we really may not be as free to just share openly to everybody, so it's just a matter of protecting people's privacy, too.
This is, uh, this is Mike Gilner again. Is there a, a separate ordinance establishing the, um, the Personnel Committee?
I would actually have to look that up for you, Mike.
I don't believe there's an ordinance. It's in our rules of procedure.
Yeah.
It's in our rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure? Okay. Well, so I'm looking, um, I'm, I'm on my iPhone now looking at the, the General Law Village Act, and I don't see, um, I don't see anything in here which, which says that, so if, if we start with the assumption that this is an advisory only, that there's anything here that says how those positions are filled, that is usually done or spelled out, um, either in your rules or, you know, whatever it is that, that created that. It appeared to me that it needs to come from the president with the approval of, of the council. If there is a, a, a document creating this, this Personnel Committee, how the, is filled.
Mike, could you...
So, the, the item number, item, item number four, to your point, um, under Village of Ortonville Rules of Procedures, item number four, committees. The village council representative of the various committee boards and councils will be appointed by the village president and approved by council. item number four, committees, the village council representative of the various committee boards and councils will be appointed by the village president and approved by council. They should, shall be members of council. So it's written right in our rules of procedures, to your point, Mike, that that's our procedure. So Tanya, you would, you would nominate the, the third open position and, and council would therefore vote to approve that nomination.
Okay, so Mike Gilner, I didn't hear, the, the end of what you said got cut off. I know, and then Dan started talking. I didn't hear what you said and I hate to backtrack. I don't know if you remember where you were at.
Yeah. What I was saying is I don't see anything at all in this Michigan statute, which, which specifies the procedure by which that deposition is filled. And therefore we turn to the document which creates the body, the Personnel Committee, and, and how that says it's filled.
Mike, can I refer you to section 62.13 in the General Law Village Act? I'm not sure exactly which page that's on, but.
And can I just pipe up here and reiterate that the current motion on the table is to suspend the rules of procedure as it regards, regards to F A5, Village of Ortonville Personnel Committee. Is that correct?
No, the selection of it. So now it's not out section A5. It, it has to do with the selection to fill that third person. So if you go to page number 13 under committees, number four, that's what it's, the, the suspension would be on.
Okay.
Mr. Hayden, what was that section again? 62. What?
13.
What chapter?
Uh, 62.13 in the General Law Village Act.
Is that the right one that I directed you to before Larry? Because before you had the, the wrong area. Is that the right area that we discussed many, gosh, a year ago or so?
Uh, this is, I, I had that, let's see, I'm trying to find the actual full copy that I have of the General Law Village Act.
I know that we discussed this, like I said, at least a year, year and a half ago. And it pertained, it didn't pertain to this specifically. It was referencing something else.
It says vacancies, filling, special elections, procedures, expenses.
So Mr. Hayden, that applies to a vacancy occurring in the office of president, trustee, or any other elective office.
Yeah.
How that is filled, which this is not an elective office.
But there's also all other vacancies in any other office. So elected officials are filled by the council. Elected positions are filled by the council. And then immediately following says, all vacancies in any other office shall be filled by the president. And this is where I had, I wasn't sure if committees were officials or not until I went way back to the definition sections. And I saw that under definitions, officials are anybody who is serving in any committee or official position created by the council for the operation of their village or community.
Yeah.
Office position is not considered a committee member.
Right, that's not the right area, Larry.
Yeah, but it's, it's up, it's up under the def, the definitions is where I got clarifications. Good definitions say, anybody who is appointed to fill any position on a committee that's created by the council for the operation of the village is considered a village official. It's, it's very confluted. It's about as, as clear as some of our zoning ordinances, actually.
It's not, it's, it's in the right section. It's spelled out very clear.
Which section do you have there, Colleen?
You know, I don't have it right here, right hand, because I didn't, wasn't prepared to bring that down. But I know we discussed this before and it's, the, the section you're referring to, like Mike suggested, that's pertaining to open positions in, in the op elected or the offices or something. It doesn't pertain to how committee, subcommittees assignment. Because ultimately, all our committees report to and are under the consent, a consensus of council. No committees and councils acts on their own behalf.
So I've been asked that, to, to weigh in on that elsewhere, only one other time. I'm looking here at 61.1A. It says officer means the village president, clerk, or treasurer, a village trustee, or an appointed person authorized by the council.
Yes. That's where I went to the def, that's where I said, as I found in the definitions, that that's what an officer is. And because committees are created by the council and appointees are designated, they would be officers of the village is the way I'm interpreting that. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I, I think that is subject to interpretation. I, I have historically taken the position that an officer is not, does not include a person on an advisory committee only.
Correct.
Correct. But you know, 61.1A, it's a paragraph E. And all I can do is, is, is read that to you and unfortunately, I, I, I'm not going to be able to do any in-depth research here on the fly.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about, you know, paying legal to have Tanya make up her mind as to who she wants to fill in that third position.
I think if we're, if, if we're willing to just follow the standard process where the president nominates and the council approves, then we don't need to suspend any rules.
Right.
So if the motion's on the floor, do we want to withdraw the motion then, Dan? So that we don't have to debate this further or what do we want to do?
I'll withdraw the motion if Tanya can nominate somebody within the five people she has to choose from. Because she, she and you are already on, on the Personnel Committee. So I'll withdraw it if she can make, make that selection tonight, if be able to do this tonight.
So we have a motion on the table. Is that stand or is that being withdrawn?
I'm not going to withdraw my motion until, until I know we're going to be able to fill that position. COVID-19 and the protection of our employees, I've already made myself very clear, is, should be on the highest priority amongst all the things that we're doing right now. And right now, we have two people on the Personnel Committee already assigned to three or four other committees and not getting the job done. We need to protect our employees and we need to choose that third person tonight.
So you have the motion and you're standing with the motion and that's supported by Councilman Scornica as well? And that stands, correct?
That one, that was to suspend the rules, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I have.
To allow us to make a motion to then select and it would supersede what the president would do then.
Right.
All right. And I would like to choose to postpone that as we have received no information on this. We have done no research. We have our manager and our lawyer who are indecisive as to what the procedures would be. We have never suspended our rules of procedure. And I'm very uncomfortable in these waters, making assumptions without knowing what our legal standings are.
I think we heard from legal and Michael did say, in the way his stance was, what, what he would have to do is go back and try to interpret it a different way, right? Other than what he's typically interpreted. And he's already told us that officers consist of elected officials and not sitting committee members. So that's what he said tonight.
But it's in section 62.2, it talks about additional officers in appointment. And this is where the committees come into play. If we designate that we need committees to perform operations that we feel are necessary for the village, then that's where the additional officers in appointment comes in under section 62.2.
I'm, I'm, I, listen, I, I'm going to keep with my motion to suspend the rules of procedures. And if it's voted that we temporarily suspend them for the election of this third seat, I will make a motion if someone else can't decide who they want on that seat. But that's what I'm going to do.
I think we just need to call
So I'm not suspending, I'm not suspending, Mike, I'm not suspending, I'm not taking my motion off. I want to vote, I want to, I want to vote on it.
Okay, so Dan, your motion is to temporarily suspend the rules of procedure regarding F A5?
No. I didn't say that, Liz. It's item number four, committees. The village council representatives on various committees, boards, and council will be appointed by the village manager and approved by council. They will be members of council. That's what I'm suspending right there. I'm suspending that statement so that I can make a motion to get somebody on that third seat on the Personnel Committee.
Okay, so, all right. I was, I was focused on the Personnel Committee. I apologize. Dale, what were you saying? I'm sorry, you got cut off.
The remark was made that the, the village manager made the appointments. I was just correcting it that it's the president.
I'm sorry, the ver, right. Page 13, Liz. The first paragraph on number four.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table by Councilman Eschman, supported by Councilman Scornica. Is there any further questions, discussion? All right. And as I said, I would like to go on record that I'm not comfortable with this and I would like this postponed due to legal opinion, further investigation as to suspending these rules of procedures.
And I would like to go on record that I feel that this action is not in accordance with the General Law Village Act. And I feel that it is not legal for us to take the procedure other than the appointment of officers of the village being done by the president.
And I'd like to go on record, anyone voting no on this has their, does not have their employees at heart and their residents at heart to protect them against COVID-19. Because what we heard tonight, what we heard from the Personnel Committee tonight did not have one statement, all right, to address what they were going to do to help the village manager protect our employees and our residents. That's why it's there tonight.
That was never a question in this discussion. You never asked that question.
That's all right, I just went on record.
Okay. All right, so are we ready for a vote?
Just, if I, if I could, could interject this. And I'm not taking anybody's side or any position's side in the discussion of this motion or the vote. But I want to clear to the council and to any public that's listening to this, that it is very much my, my intent and interest in protecting our employees and our position. And that's why we have Beth working Monday and Tuesday and Liz working Thursday and Friday. And we're closed on Wednesday to give an opportunity that if any foreign material came into the office, it would, would be, would die before any of us were back. We also have, have brought in our cleaning lady every day to clean the, the premises, to make sure that they're, this is sanitized as it can be. In the PPW, I talk to them daily to make sure that they're keeping the right distances from each other and that they're not appro, like being approached by anybody to talk to them or to, or to make contact without the right social distancing. So we're paying attention to all these things for the protection. I'm doing, doing everything I can to protect all of our employees at, at all times.
I don't think anybody's saying you're not, but there's zero policy right now as it relates to protecting our residents and our employees under COVID-19. And that's why I'm adding, and that's why I, I, I think it's important that council needs to consider, we need to, we already considered it. We need a third person on that Personnel Committee to help with those policies and get them in writing, right? And that's what we're here talking about. So I'm not saying you're not trying to do your best, but I think we can do better at it.
I'm, I'm just, and I'm, I'm not trying to take a position on either side of this discussion. I just thought that because it's been talked about, like we're not doing anything, that I wanted to make it clear we were.
And I would concur with Dale. He's, we're, we're doing absolutely everything we can.
Do you wear masks when you come into the office, Liz?
Um, not when I come into the office, but when I travel in my car, yes, I do.
Boy, I actually thought that was part of an executive order out there somewhere. Hey, listen, I think we can do better and that's why we're talking about it.
Okay. Well, I think Dale's absolutely doing everything he can.
All right, so anybody else have anything to share before we have a vote? All right, Liz, can we please have a roll call vote? This is to suspend the rules. Correct. Robinson? Mark? Robinson?
I said yes, did you hear me?
Thank you.
No.
Scornica?
Yes.
Uh, Bryce?
No.
Butts?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
No.
Hayden?
No.
That would do four, three. Thank you, motion
Motion passes.
Four, three. Thank you.
So I would like to, I would like to make a motion to fill that third pe, seat on the Personnel Committee. And I'd like to, and I believe some time ago, it was mentioned that it's Colleen Scornica said on the Personnel Committee for many years. And she brought a lot of value to that committee. And I'm making a, a motion to place Colleen Scornica back on the Personnel Committee.
I'll, this is Mark and I'll support that.
Watzu?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Eschman, supported by Councilman Schosting to place Councilman Scornica on Personnel Committee. Colleen, is that something that you're interested in? Colleen, are you there?
Oh, yep, yep, yeah, I was on you. Yeah, that's fine.
Is that something you're interested with?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right.
Unless there's somebody else on council that would like to do it.
Well, let's find out. Any further questions or discussions?
This is Mark again, and I would just like to say, months ago, I, in discussion, I suggested, Colleen, only because of her experience in this and she hadn't been on the committee before. And I just want to reiterate that, that this is not a willing, no way. I've been thinking of Colleen for a while. That's all right.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else?
I would have to agree. Like I said, this is Mark Robinson. I, you know, Colleen's been on before. She had a lot of experience. So I, I think, you know, I know Dan has been on before, but, you know, I think Colleen's had a lot of experience with all this, so I really recommend that.
But like I said, yeah, I have no problem serving, but it's like unless there is anybody else that would like to, to do that, so.
All right, well, this is our motion on the table currently. Any further discussions, questions? All right, hearing done. Liz, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Uh, Scornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Watzu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
George?
No.
Hayden?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Um, so that, um, did I get everyone?
Yeah.
Bryce, did I get you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you got me. No, it's four, three, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what you have, Liz?
Yes, motion carries four, three.
Motion carries four, three. Thank you. All right, next up is
Before we leave this topic, Dan, since you have, this is such an urgent topic, do you want us to also set a Personnel Committee meeting so that we can meet to discuss the topic about, that you have the concerns with?
I think that the committee members can work that out, Larry. You don't need me figuring out what you need to do. You guys got to work out amongst your schedules.
I, I agree that, yeah, I think that we have to get together sooner than later. We can talk about that later or tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll let you, Tanya, I will leave that to you to coordinate with us and, and let us know.
We'll all get it figured out. All right, item number eleven is our unfinished business, and first up we have the way, oh, and, yes, the wayfinding, and that is the, um, extension of the wayfinding committee. And as a committee, we have-
You're cutting out, Tanya.
Pardon?
You're cutting out.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, and, and when we have a subcommittee, we do have to extend it officially, and the six-month period is up, so we were to request an extension of the wayfinding committee.
I make a motion to extend the wayfinding committee, uh, subcommittee project until September one, 2020. This is an extension of six months past the original expiry date of March first.
Do we have a support? I will support that.
Okay.
All right, so, do we have any questions or comments on the discussion of extending the wayfinding committee?
This is Mark jumping in on this, um, I, I'm for getting that done and over with, it's been on the table for a long time, and because we're talking about signs after all, so let's break it down to signage, we have some good ideas, and that's why I'd like, I'd like to keep it going forward and get it done as quickly as possible.
I will do my best.
Any other questions, discussion?
I think six months is too long.
All right.
This is Mark again, and I'd like to, I think thirty days is more than enough time, more than enough time to get the signs on.
But isn't this just extending to have that committee for another six months, but it doesn't mean that it's going to take six months to get the signs, so, right?
Correct. That is correct.
When they're done, they're done.
We already had it, but- It's not a six-month, it's not a six-month task, so we're already creating a, a year to do this, right, so we've approved six months in the past, now we're approving another six months, a year to, for this massive metropolis of Ortonville to figure out where signs should go and how many we should have, what they should look like?
It, it's the design, Dan, and where they should be placed. Uh, Mark Robinson can probably weigh in on that.
And, thank you, Liz, as I did earlier, um, you know, this is going to be dragged out for quite some time, I mean, that's what Joe Frost had told us, um, you know, many people were in, in these last couple meetings, that it's not going to happen anytime soon, uh, especially with the grant money and all that, that still hasn't came forward yet, you know, it's, it's pending, it's out there, but we're, we're looking probably into the fall before we really even start to move forward, and then, then there's a group, uh, that, um, this, this, um, this monies that is, uh, being given through, through the DDA, uh, they come in, they do an assessment of the village and the existing signage, recommended signage and all that, you know what I mean, so, uh, there, there's just a lot to do with all this, it's-
I don't, I don't understand why we need someone else to tell us what our signs should look like, I, I would envision that committee comes up with three or four different versions of a, of a sign or a common sign, and, and, okay, bring it to council and say, hey, what do you think, but why do we have to have somebody else come in and wait another four or five months to, to do some massive survey and what these signs should look like and where they should go, I just don't see this as a six-month project, I just think that by, by including everybody else as to what they think our, our signs should look like is, is adding to six months, now we got a year-long project going on.
Or more.
They, I think it's council, DDA, and Planning Commission on the committee to decide what it should look like with professional assistance, there is no they, it's us, this is our, our, you know, undertaking.
And I would like to mention, we are a Main Street community, so why not take advantage of those Main Street community resources that we have available to us?
And that's what it is, Larry, it is Main Street, uh, uh, that is, uh, you know, providing these services, but it doesn't happen overnight.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I just wanted everybody to be aware upfront, that's why I said at the beginning of the meeting, you know, when I was giving my updates, that we, well, this is not going to happen overnight, so I, I don't want people, you know, like harping on me, it's not me, you know what I mean, that I'm not doing my job or anything, I want everybody to know that, you know, through Main Street and all this, this is going to take some time before we're even put on the schedule to get it done, and, you know, waiting for the grant money to come through and all that, you know, through the DDA, you know, so, and I haven't heard nothing back from Matt Jenkins in, in a few months about that either, so, you know, I, I'm, you know, just waiting to hear back who's going to, you know, run with it on the DDA side to take Matt Bailey's position and that, so, I mean, we're just in a lingo.
How many members are on that?
Oh, wow.
Because there's DDA Planning Commission Council.
We had one, you know, from council, that was me, and then, uh, then, uh, we had Matt Bailey, and, uh, I think we had one more from DDA, and then, then we had a couple from, uh, Planning Commission, we had Melanie, and, um, I'm trying to remember who. Patty? Oh, yeah, well, well, right now she no longer is part of the committee, you know, so.
I, I, this is Mark again, I, I'll just say, I still think it's way too long, six months, for the amount of people that have been involved so far, in the time and effort we've spent so far, um, Matt Jenkins, who, DDA, if they're taking the lead for money, I think maybe they could find the time to spend a little bit more time getting the signs in, that local village people are, are expecting, and, and we've told them that we're going to get signs in there, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to put it commonsensically, let's get some signs in, and six months is way too long in my opinion.
Or longer.
Or longer.
Um, I'm not comfortable pinning people, the DDA is not here to defend themselves, it is not Matt Jenkins' responsibility, it is the committee's responsibility to get assistance, and they're working on that, and so I don't appreciate putting people under the bus that have nothing to do with it.
Well, well, then why don't we just table this until we can come up with a, a new uh, date or something, you know, a finish date or whatever, why don't we table it? Why does this have to be decided today?
Well, officially it's expired, so therefore if you guys would like to meet and continue with the project, the committee itself is supposed to have a, a, a set deadline, a next deadline.
Okay, well, nobody's meeting right now anyway, so we can always reconvene the committee at a later date, I mean, nobody's meeting for another couple months, if not longer.
I think to table this, this, um, item would, would be appropriate to do at this time, uh, because it, it has been, has been said, it's almost impossible to hold a meeting anyway.
So, Mark, would you like to request to postpone?
I would, I'd like to just go ahead and, uh, yeah, let's table this and postpone it until we can come up with dates-
What about the motion that's on the floor?
I'm sorry, what?
What about the motion that's currently on the floor?
Um, my motion is from Hayden, uh, seconded by Bryce, to extend the wayfinding committee for an additional six months.
Then, since I was supported by Bryce, uh, do you think we should withdraw the motion, Tanya, since you supported it?
That, that was why I was asking, Mark, yes, if Mark would like to postpone, I don't mind withdrawing.
Okay, then I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Then I will withdraw my motion then.
Thank you.
So then, Mark, would you, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yes, I'd like to make a motion at this time to table the wayfinding committee until we can further get more information as far as, uh, uh, funding and everything, you know, that, that's available.
So you'd like to postpone that?
I would like to postpone the, the wayfinding committee to convene, I mean, is that the proper verbic-?
And do we have support? I will support that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Bryce, or I'm sorry, a motion by Robinson, uh, support by Bryce to table.
Please. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Is there discussion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought we, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we can't discuss it till we have the motion, I just have a question, um, would you consider, Mark, to put in a, a postponement date, just so it doesn't leave it open-ended until whenever, even if we have to postpone it again in thirty days, but at least we don't lose sight of it?
Um, let's postpone it for three months, you know, and that way, I mean, I should have some information back by then if we're going to be able to move forward, or what's happening with the funding, especially with COVID-19 and everything, we don't know what's going to happen with, you know, these types of fundings for our committees and all that, if it's going to change or what, because we don't have that in hand yet, you know what I mean, we, we just have that request out there for it. Let me see, let's say three months.
All right, I'll support that.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Robinson, support by Bryce, to table for three months, is that correct?
Yes. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, Liz, can we please have a roll call vote?
Bryce?
Yes.
Butsu?
Yes.
Mark Butsu?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ashman?
Yep.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh. Thank you, motion carries seven zero, and next up on unfinished business, we have the master plan.
Yeah, so I brought that up, and this is another frustration of mine, you know, late last year, 2019, you know, we were frantically trying to get a good plan together, we went back and forth, many delays occurred, et cetera, and by December ninth, I believe, we finally got a version out there to Oakland County and every, for everybody to review it, here it is, the end of April already, and we still don't have a public hearing, and we're, this is all open-ended, right, so we don't, it doesn't seem like we have any sense of urgency, we had an urgency when we were developing the plan, but to get this thing approved and done, it seems like, it seems like the urgency just fell right off, so, in my opinion-
If I'm allowed to pipe in, um, trustee Ashman, the, um, the Planning Commission has not meant they have to have a public hearing in order to, um-
I get all that, but, but you know what, that was-
Give a recommendation to you, so it-
I understand the public hearing, I'm sorry, Liz, you know, the public hearing should have been done a long time ago, it should have been done in February, and here we are in April, that's my point, sixty-three days from the day we submit it, it was December ninth when we got it out there, okay, and it would have been, we had twenty days in February to get it all done, and yet, you know, again, it's not done, and what excuses are out there?
Well, Dan, since I'm-
It's not COVID because it could have been done before COVID, yeah.
Since I'm on Planning Commission, we did have that at the March meeting, we reviewed all of the comment that was received from neighboring communities, including Oakland County, at our March Planning Commission, and we said, okay, yes, we accept all that, we decided to just continue and accept the plan as it had been originally presented, and we said the next step is just to schedule the public meeting, and, uh, I think we were just waiting to get that public meeting scheduled when all the COVID stuff hit, so we have not come back to that topic.
It was scheduled and canceled because of COVID.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we, we're going to schedule that, but obviously right now it's going to be very difficult to schedule a public meeting on this until after the situation changes, so as soon as it, we have the opportunity, I think we, I agree with you, we should have the public meeting as soon as we can, but at the moment, it seems like that's not going to happen anytime in the immediate future.
Well, I, I think this meeting was open to the public, and if we have to, and we are accepting it the way we wrote it and the way we presented it on December ninth, then we need to figure out how we're going to do this virtual over online and let, let the public, uh, talk about it, uh, on, on open forum over the airlines, if we're not going to, if we're not going to, um, do this in person, right, in a open public forum, which is highly unlikely, how many months are we going to wait for this to be approved? Uh, my recommendation from the Planning Commission is to set up a call, and let's have that public hearing.
Okay, I would be, I would be good with that, I, I, if we can get something scheduled, uh, I would ask our village manager to work out what type of arrangement we can do with that, and get together with our Planning Commission chairperson to come up with a decision on a date and how we, how to hold the meeting.
Okay.
So, Dan, what was, I guess you, I just wanted to have the discussion.
I couldn't do anything more, I knew, I knew a public hearing needed to happen, and I got what I heard from a, from a Planning Committee member, um, and they're going to try to get something virtual done that we can, uh, we don't have to use the COVID as a reason why not to do something.
That's fine, and I just-
And that's going to have to be up to the Planning Commissioner chairperson, so.
And that's what I was going to suggest, this question goes to Planning Commission, so you can email, call, or you can talk to Planning Commission and discuss it with them, and then it would come back to council, um, this isn't necessarily a council question, this is a, a personnel, or, I mean, a Planning Committee question.
I'll talk to the chairman.
Let me just inter, interject on that, um, speaking of that, I, I found out, um, looking at the Planning Commission meeting minutes, that as of February fifth, that they have a new chairperson and secretary, um, Rick McAvinci is the new chair for council members, that don't know that, and Melanie Nivell is the secretary, and, um, that wasn't communicated to us as well, or even brought up in the, in the, you know, the Planning Commission update, so I just want to bring council up to speed on that as well, so if you have any Planning Commission concerns, just forward them to Rick.
I didn't know you were on Planning Committee. I didn't know you were on the Planning Committee.
We met on March third, and now is the first time we're meeting since that point, this is the first time we've met since we've had that meeting.
But we, but, but my point is, is like, an email, a communication, the meeting minutes, because it's the meeting minutes, um, is it anything that we approve, it's just information, it's just, uh, it's just a communication, transparency, and that just, that, that failed, and then the Planning Commission updates when, when we went around earlier, just to give us an update on that, but anyway, I found that out today, and it is in the meeting minutes, so, yes, so I think there was a question, somebody said, is it in the minutes, and I'm just replying, yes, it was.
All right.
Okay, yeah, because I know we had asked in the past to make sure that our draft meeting minutes are distributed to council, just to try to keep the, well, I, I know we've, in the past, I've asked for the draft Planning Commission, this is even before I was on-
Oh, yeah, before you guys, yeah.
I, I said, hey, I want to make sure that the, the council has kept informed, and I asked that draft minutes can also be distributed to council, even if they're not approved, so, I don't know if that didn't happen for some reason, but it's been kind of a crazy time, I know, the last few months.
Well, that's no excuse, because this, this transpired before COVID-19, and again, we're left out of the loop of the rest of council for so many items, and this just adds to the list, if you ask me, I didn't, I wasn't made aware of this, you know?
Well, then we'll make a recommendation to Rick to pass that information along, thank you.
I'm sure it's in the document library.
It is, that's where I found it.
Is there, is there something I should be doing for you guys that I'm not?
No, I think that would be a Planning Commission thing, that what they'd like to, to communicate those changes, then that would be nice for them to communicate.
We have, we have two representatives on council of the Planning Commission that we would get, that are the liaisons for information to us, and I would think that they would be responsible to relay that information to us as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm just making sure I'm giving you your information.
Yeah, normally we get the minutes, so, yeah, normally we get the minutes.
Do you send the draft minutes from the Planning Commission to the council members, Liz?
Typically I do, yes.
Okay, so as long as you're getting, as long as the council's also getting the draft Planning Commission meetings, when we get them on, when the Planning Commission gets them too, I think that should hopefully help people keep everybody informed on what's happening on Planning Commission.
Okay, and maybe I didn't do this this past time, if I didn't, I apologize.
So, this is Mark again, and I, I think I missed a little bit, was it, Rick McAvinci is now the-
Chairperson.
Okay, and the, um, secretary is?
Melanie.
Melanie Nivell.
Melanie Nivell, okay, okay, good, thank you.
So, I, I don't want to lose focus, we're on the master plan, we can move on to that when we do our, our comments, but let's stay on the master plan, um, Dan, is there anything else that you had with that?
Nope, thanks for everybody's, uh, engagement there.
And anybody else have any questions or comments on the master plan for the unfinished business? All right, next up would be items from the trustees, and let's start reverse alphabetical, so that would be Colleen.
Oh, let me see here, um, the notice that's on our website, and I believe it's the same, um, copy that says that we're closed, um, I'm- Um, I'm, I'm sorry, to, oh, let me get it. Um, announcing our COVID closures, and it says contact us Monday through Friday. However, it does not say that they're closed on Wednesday, so I just suggest that we put that in there. And I guess based once personnel meets and then council decides if that will still be in place or not, um, we can modify it, but as of right now, it doesn't notify the public that we're closed on Wednesdays.
There is a sign on the door, though, Colleen, just FYI.
Okay.
And our voicemails.
Okay, um, and then on the web, I would. Okay, I would suggest that on the website, it also updates the, um, um, the census. The census, um, was April 1st, and I just, as a reminder, if anybody out there has not done it, to please do so. It's very important that we're all counted. That's how we can get our federal, our federal dollars. Um, not sure how much we'll have left over as a result of everything, but hey, there'll be some dollars out there. So please get your census in if you haven't, otherwise, um, that will not be good. Um, so Liz, I just suggested to you, um, just update our website about the, um, census that, that you would take as April 1st, that says it's coming, and it's already been here.
Yeah, and I, I won't be back until, um, Thursday, but I will do that.
Okay, that's fine. And then, um, I would like to know about the budget, and I, I, I guess I thought the budget might be on there. And if we're going to be meeting, I mean, basically, we're at May 1st, and we have a budget due. Um, I'd like to know the status of the budget, and I think we need to get, um, our workshop scheduled, because we do not have any budget meeting scheduled for May. And normally, we have at least one or two, but, um, at the beginning of the year, that, um, that wasn't done. And I would like to know with our DPW, um, aside from having a, us down to one DPW right now, if we're all set with all the parks, if we're ready and open, and the park is, the equipment's all been checked out, cleaned up, any, you know, dirt, debris, graffiti, or, or whatnot is all cleaned up, that we're all spring-ready for, for the parks, especially with the kids being home. And, let me see what else. Um. Hold on a minute. I've got several notes here, so. I'd like to know, um, if what we're going to do about our May meeting, because the executive order only goes until May 12th. Is that something we want to, um, figure out now and set and establish? And then, um, uh, I just request that Dale, if you can just get back with me tomorrow, and once you talk to Bob about the old mill sign. And also, I would like to, because, well, hopefully, very soon, when the blacksmith shop opens up, um, you know, we'll be, and people coming into town and whatnot, I would like to make sure that our, um, old mill is spruced up and cleaned up, as well as the blacksmith shop area. And if we can just take a look at the creek and just clean up. I know at one time I mentioned about poison ivy being over that way, and I do think it's important, as we have people migrating around the area, that we don't have any, um, poison ivy. If we can try to eradicate that to the best of our ability, and possibly look at disguising that ugly white drain. And that is it for me.
All right, thank you. How about Mark Robinson?
All righty, um, what I have, first of all, I think many of you have noticed that, uh, we've had some tree services going around, trimming up all the trees around the power lines and all that. I've heard, I mean, and I'm, I'm on board with everybody, uh, a lot of the comments that I've been getting, and, you know, and I've seen it myself during my walks, is there's a lot of butchering going on. Now, I understand that they got to clear, you know, the trees away from the lines. Some areas, they do a little bit better. Other areas, I mean, it's just downright nasty and ugly-looking. So there's a couple of spots, um, and I brought up to Dale's attention, uh, two, three weeks ago, and, uh, but there's a couple of spots over there at James and Mill Street, where the, it's so butchered up, not only does it look ugly, but I mean, it looks unsafe. And especially down there at Narin and Mill Street. I mean, the way the, the trees trimmed, and I even talked to Bob Huxwell. He said he agreed that that tree is a danger situation and everything. And it's, they're both on village property, so I, I think we need to either cut them way back or cut them completely down.
Is it W R I G H T, tree service?
Yes, those are the ones that were hired by, or contracted by DTE.
Yep, I can call them.
Okay, but, well, see, I mean, they're just doing their job and everything, but now we have a couple of trees that have been butchered, and, and, um, and so, you know, now they become not only hazardous, but they, they're such a huge eyesore coming into town, okay? So, um, I, I was talking to, um, Ron Sutton earlier today, and he has some beautiful pine trees in his yard, and they just totally cut one half of the side down. I mean, he's just really sickened. I know his daughter was going to call, uh, DTE and all that. It just, there's a lot of that going on, and we want our village to look nice, and right now, it's just being all hacked up, okay? So that was all, one of my items. Um, and then also, uh, I know what the, the way the meeting was scheduled. I mean, we still, I would still like to see our tracking reports on, you know, any violations and all that. And I spoke with Dale a little while back about, like, blight situations. It says, just seems like everything keeps getting put off and put off about handling the blight. So I strongly recommend we get these, uh, tracking reports updated, and how we're going to, what properties we're going to handle with the blight as soon as, uh, this COVID-19 is, you know, lifted. But in the meanwhile, why can't we, you know, reach out to residents and saying, hey, once it's lifted, you've got 14 days to handle your blight situation. In the meantime, you know, you have a window, and there are some things that we can all take care of in our yards and everything else. I'm sure everybody's been doing extra cleanup, so let's, let's take care of it and have this spring looking really nice here in the village. So Dale, if you could, um, please, uh, update your report and get it back to us on council. Yeah, I really, really appreciate that. And, um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a real quick question? Can I just go back to me for a minute? Um, do we know, um, with the, because based on our agenda out there, I haven't seen anything come through. The Springtime Garden Show downtown, I'm assuming, has been canceled? Um, is there anybody?
It has, that is correct, yep. It has been canceled.
And Memorial Day Parade is also canceled.
Correct.
Okay, so can we just, um, update our web about the May 16th? I didn't see about the parades, it wasn't on there, but the Springtime Garden Show, just as FYI? Thank you, that, that's it now.
Thank you. All right, who's up? I believe, am I working backwards? That would be Larry?
Trustee Eschman.
Oh, okay, well, I was going alphabetical, but sure. Let's go, Dan.
I'm keeping track.
All right, I, I have two things. So I'd like to reiterate what I brought up on our February meeting in regards to the Crossman Park drain and the, um, and the design of that. I think just because we have drains that are discharging into the creek today does not make it necessarily right. And just to say we do it today, and we'll just continue to keep that practice without at least the MVNR approving our, our drain project from Crossman Park. Uh, I know how much water, uh, accumulates in Crossman Park. It's important that when we do fix that, that we do it the right way. It is approved by the MVNR to discharge that drain into the creek. So that's, I'd like to make that, uh, uh, another item, and maybe Dale, you can report out on that, maybe next, uh, next month. And then, uh, second to that, I believe trustee Batso, or, uh, uh, several trustees, uh, worked with Liz to get a, uh, some signage going for the, uh, Wildlife Preservation Park. I haven't necessarily seen those signs, but I heard that, that they're, uh, they're nice, and I heard there's four free signs that we can put up tomorrow, had we gotten that on the agenda. But I'd like to see that on the agenda, and maybe, uh, maybe Mark, uh, Robinson could report out, uh, that, uh, next month.
For wayfinding, okay. Um, hey, if I can also mention, since you brought up the drainage situation, Dan, that, um, you know, that one resident that we had over there, uh, that was going to allow us to go through his property, and he was pending his, uh, restructuring of his, uh, septic system, right? Because he had to do an engineered field. He had such a small tank that he was having to have a service come in and drain it, I mean, every like five days or so, because it was a small tank at the time. So he incurred, uh, a bill of over 200 and some odd dollars each and every time, waiting for us to be able to make a decision and everything. And, and I give the guy a lot of credit, that he was willing to, you know, wait for us and try to help out the village and everything else. But that man incurred a lot of expenses, and somehow, I feel that he needs to be compensated. So.
So that's, that's a good point, from a drain perspective. Maybe we need to understand the timing of all that and what really took place there. I've heard something to that point, but I, I really didn't, you know, I get enough information to connect the dots to say, are we, do we, uh, you know, do we have some liability there? But I think we need to understand.
Could you please look into that further, Dan, since you were the one handling that, with the, with the, uh, the village resident and everything else? I mean, I mean, if somebody's wanted to stand up and, and, and try to help out the village, and it could have saved us thousands of dollars if it could have been approved that way. And, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, somebody don't get slapped on the wrist for trying to stand up and help out the village, you know, and, and he has to take all the, all the expenses out of his own pocket. So if you could look into that, Dan, I'd appreciate it for us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll dig into that. That's the first time I heard about it, and it was new to me, um, when I heard it. So, yeah, we, we just need to dig into that more, I think.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else, Dan?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Larry, you're up.
Okay, well, um, I'm going to first of all say that I think that, um, Dale and the village staff have been doing a really good job in very difficult situation. I know that they're trying their best to try to keep everybody protected and safe, so I hope that those measures work out well for everybody on the staff. And I do appreciate their, everybody's efforts and commitment during these tough times, uh, on our village staff. Um, one thing I think that, I, I know for a while that we had a burning ban, but that was lifted recently, and I've noticed that, yes, I've seen fires. In fact, I had one myself already on a proper burning day. But I've also seen, just today, I saw people were burning and had some smoky fires going. And today is not a burning day. And I would like to see, maybe we can put a reminder notice out on our website and try to get a reminder to the public that, uh, when we, now that the burning ban is lifted, you still have to put in for a burning permit properly with Fire Department, and you still have to properly follow the burn schedule on the Fire Department. There's nothing more frustrating than for my wife to go do a big load of laundry in the morning, go to, get all hung out, and then somebody lights a big smoky fire, and she's like, ah! So I just want to see our residents get reminded that, uh, you know, please be considerate of your neighbors, and please follow the, uh, guidelines and the burning schedule according to the Brandon Fire Department burn permits.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right. Pat, you're up.
Nothing for me, I'm good.
All right. Mark, Batso?
Uh, yeah, good point, Larry. I, I agree, uh, I agree with your, uh, your burning assessment there. Um, I've got just two points, and one is the budget meeting coming up. Um, I know in the past, it's, it's actually not a lot of fun, but it is. It's becoming more fun to go to the, uh, the room. And, um, is it possible, Tanya, that we can maybe, you know, ask around if we could use the Old Town Hall? And maintain our distances, of course, but, uh, for things that are going back and forth, sometimes it's, it may be okay for some people to use the long tables and, uh, spread out paperwork. I don't know what you think about that, but.
Well, I think we'll find out after, uh, November, I mean, May 15th, when she says whether we can or not. We can see.
It would just, it would just be for us.
I want, the other thing is, you need to know that I just recently got some data for the budget that I needed in order to put some stuff together, and so I'm not ready for us to meet yet.
Yeah, I, I'm more under a time crunch and, um, but whenever we do, if it's available, it may be a good idea.
We can always cancel meetings, but can't we go ahead and schedule something for after the May 15th? You know, I mean, toward the end of the month? I mean, we do somehow need to meet and do this.
Um, so you've got the, um, the May workshop meeting, and then, um, you have your actual regular meeting where you can approve the agenda with a public hearing. And that would be May?
Well, that's not on the calendar. What, what day is that in May? I think we had a budget meeting in May, Liz.
Um, there's a workshop?
Yeah.
June 8th.
Okay, so not in May.
I don't think there was another one.
I didn't, that.
I wonder if it's thinking, because our meeting is May 18th, our, our regular meeting.
The workshop on May 4th. And the regular meeting is on the 18th.
Oh, that's not on the calendar, okay, maybe.
I'm not aware of that.
Right, okay, and that, that could be me, but that's when I think that's scheduled for.
Oh. Maybe it's June.
We know we can't have a public meeting on May 4th, so that doesn't work.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the workshop is on June 8th. Your public hearing is going to be on June 21st.
June 21st is a Sunday. Liz?
I did schedule a workshop in there.
Liz, June 21st is a Sunday. Is it the 22nd?
Yes.
I thought you said the 21st.
21st is a Sunday.
Oh.
Monday and 22nd is our regular council meeting.
Correct. The 22nd is our regular council meeting.
Yes, and that's where you can have your public hearing.
Perfect, yep, just making sure we're on the same day.
Like, it's not a whole lot of time to be able to go through a budget and get it done and get it in front of the, the public.
I think what they're saying is that's the public hearing to the public. That is not your budget hearing time.
June 8th is our, is our budget workshop, is June 8th.
That's just creating our budget, going through of what council wants and doesn't want in it, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Mark?
Um, what's on June 8th? Oh, yes, you did. That's all I've got. Uh, I just, I just wanted to be prepared for it, and, um, I think the Town Hall is a good idea if we could do it. Okay, that's it.
All right. Thank you. And I have nothing additional to add, um, besides, thank you, everybody, for our first virtual meeting and working together, and the public for bearing with us. Um, I believe I skipped over, because I did items from the trustees. I missed the public comments on non-agenda items, so I do apologize for that. Um, that was supposed to be before the items for the trustees. So if anybody in our audience had non-agenda item comments, now is the time that they can make them or type them in, and we can read them for you. Anybody have anything? Courtney, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I would be happy to update everyone on all of the things that the DDA has been up to since, um, COVID-19 and the shelter, um, stay-home, stay-safe order has, um, been in effect. Uh, we, to answer the question about why we don't have, we haven't appointed anyone to the Wayfinding Committee, is because Matt Bailey's last day was in March, the beginning of March. And we had one emergency meeting in March and did not feel that it was pertinent to the meeting at that time to, um, appoint, we were trying to get in, get our business taken care of, get out. Um, so we did not appoint anybody to the meeting, or to the Wayfinding Committee at that time. However, um, I have been in conversation, uh, with a candidate who actually is currently the alternate to the Wayfinding Committee, um, in hopes of that person taking over, but we'll know more once I have a definitive conversation, um, with them. Uh, secondly, we've been working, um, relentlessly, tirelessly on, on grant applications and assisting these, the businesses in town in our district with their grant applications, um, getting their grant applications submitted for any number of grants that are out there, all kinds of small business grants from the county, from the state. small business grants, from the county, from the state, from even Facebook, we've been assisting them with their applications to the Facebook Small Business Grants. We have been touching base with the county almost daily, the county's focus has been on COVID-19 assistance, and, and their grants and everything like that, they haven't really been focused on much of anything else right now. They did just announce grant winners on Friday, so as that becomes public knowledge, those, those information, those businesses in our district that receive grants will be coming forward and sharing that information. We have been touching base with the businesses and filtering out information that is pertinent to them from the county directly down to the businesses every day. I'm, Matt is sending out emails with updated information every single day. We have been working on our own grant applications, we just received a Flagstar Grant, which we have received in the past, for one of our upcoming projects. We have a grant deadline, oh, Matt asked me to mention that the Wayfinding Grant Deadline is coming up on May 15th, so he is currently working on that. We submitted a grant application to the MEDC for a very large amount of money, that was very time-consuming, it was 85 pages, so Matt was working on that. And we have been meeting as often as we can individually with our DDA Board members to keep everybody in the loop, to keep everybody in touch, and keep everybody moving forward, so that when restrictions are lifted, and we are able to meet again, we're able to meet and continue to move forward, rather than have to take steps back and regroup and things like that. Just looking at my notes here to see if there was anything else that I missed touching on, because I want to be as brief as possible here.
No pressure, three minutes.
I know, I'm sorry. I think, I think that's it, if anybody has any questions about anything that the DDA is working on and doing, Matt is available, but also, I wanted to reiterate that Matt is not in charge of who gets appointed to committees, so Matt has the information of a committee that needs an appointment, but he doesn't make that decision, the board makes that decision, so if the board hasn't made a decision, there is no information to relay. So at this time, we haven't been able to appoint anybody, that's why there's been no response to someone for the Wayfinding Committee, since we haven't been able to meet.
Well, I appreciate that update there, because I just reached out to Matt, he was available at the village office, and I was just looking for some input, so I appreciate that now, Courtney, thank you.
And, and we try, would try to stay in touch, of course, but especially with the COVID restrictions and the stay-safe order, it's, we have been sending out, and I've been on the phone and trying to homeschool my kids, and we have Allison Brower, who works in the medical field, and we have Paul, who's running Hamilton's by himself, I mean, there's just, everybody is so, so busy, yeah, so stuck, you know what I'm saying, everybody's stuck at home, but busy, you know, it's just a weird situation that we're in right now, and it's been really hard to make sure we're communicating it with everybody. Oh, there was one other thing, the Love Ortonville Campaign that we launched April 1st, which is six different ways to support local businesses, it doesn't have to be, you know, going out and spending money, but you can leave reviews and different things like that, has been going very, very well, and we launched a video, anyone did that video go out, what, Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, it went out, it was the Love Ortonville video, which you'll see several local faces. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get as many as I hoped, but we got a lot, and we plan to do another video with more, so if you haven't seen it, hop on Facebook and take a look on the Downtown Ortonville page and check that video out, it's really cool, it had like 10,000 views already, and really great feedback for it.
Real quick, Courtney, since you gave that update, if I can just interject real quick, how are our downtown businesses sustaining with this COVID? Are they doing, how are they doing?
We haven't lost anybody yet.
Okay.
And that's about the best I can say.
Okay, I was just curious of how they were doing down there.
The DDA has been trying to put together our own package, I don't want to call it a stimulus package, I don't really know what to call it, relief package, in which it would be similar to, you know, grant style, where they could apply for it and things like that, but as you all well know, the DDA has very limited funds. We've been trying to get some help from the county, they've encouraged us to start a patronicity, I mean, there's different things that they're encouraging us to do, but we'd really, really love for some support in putting together a grant package to help these businesses out, because in, and forgive me, the numbers might be a little bit off, there was almost 8,000 applications for the county grant, and our district, which was District 12, it was made up of nine communities in our area, our district was given $100,000 to grant to our small businesses. We had, in Brandon Township alone, what did we have, 76 applications or 78 applications for $100,000? So you can imagine, that doesn't go very far. So anything, any assistance that we can get to put together a grant kind of relief would be greatly appreciated, and could be business-saving for some of these businesses downtown.
Thank you. We also had a written comment, Melanie Nivell, she was looking to see if she could have clarification on the, it says, are the signs part of the wayfinding, and they're curious about the signs, those would be the park signs, if those are both done separately or through wayfinding.
I would think they would be done separately.
All right, thank you. Okay, I would like to see if we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hang on, Tanya, one last thing, as president of the DDA currently, you guys are welcome, I think you all know how to get ahold of me at this point in time, and if you don't, Liz can give you my information. If you have DDA questions, don't feel like you necessarily have to reach out to Matt, you're welcome to reach out to Matt as well, just understand that I am homeschooling right now, and that's hard.
Good point. If you would like to send your contact information to all of us in an email, that would be great. Thank you. All right, now are we available to entertain a motion to adjourn? Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
That was Colleen, correct?
Yeah, because my battery's going to go dead any minute.
Oh, no, all in favor-
Mine is too.
Aye.
Favor, or I should say Liz. Anybody have a problem with it? Motion carries 7-0.
Good night.
10:03.
Have a great evening.